Meeting back to order, roll call please.
Ms. Vogt?
Here.
Mr. McCullough?
Here.
Mr. Mills?
Here.
Mr. Pugnay?
Here.
Mr. Oden?
Here. We'll all stand for the flag salute. And we'll ask Councilmember Pugnay if he would please lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our invocation this evening will be delivered by Reverend Richard Dreisaitt from Palm Springs Church of Religious Science. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Tomorrow is Chinese New Year's, beginning the Year of the Monkey. What with those already exciting beginnings in Palm Springs this year, we certainly don't want you to begin with a monkey on your backs. There is so much to do, and we wish you with heaven's blessings on your actions. You'll need the wisdom of Solomon on whether the planning department will be cut in two, that of a football coach to decide if games can be played next to a living room by a church, and that of a builder as you dig to discover the right thing to do. With all the measures before you and heaven on your side, we believe you will move forward with optimism and faith for a bright and progressive, better Palm Springs. Together you and us, the citizens of this proud city, can make it even prouder. And as we say in church, "And so it is."
Amen. Thank you. This evening, we have several presentations, and our first presentation is an appreciation of service, and I'd like to ask Mr. Leslie Price if he'd come forward, please. And this is a special plaque for Mr. Price, and it says, "The success of city government depends on the involvement of its citizens." The city of Palm Springs has been fortunate in having a citizen like you who is willing to spend the many hours needed to study the problems facing the Coachella Valley Mosquito and Vector Control District. The Palm Springs City Council hereby commends Leslie Price for his dedicated service from 1993 through 2003, dated the 21st day of January 2004. Mayor Ron Oden, I'm going to ask the council if they'd please join me. Mr. Price?
If I may, I'd like to thank you for recognizing the service, but I'd also like to say that the city of Palm Springs has been most fortunate. I've been a resident here for almost 15 years and have seen a lot of growth. I see a lot of volunteer activity, and I see a council that's willing to stand out there and find people to help you, and you're not shy about letting people take a part in the local government, and I do appreciate that. I want to thank you very much.
And thank you. Now, we will have a presentation, citizens' medals of valor. Good evening, Chief.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, on behalf of the police department, I would like to do three presentations for citizens in our community who did some extra things for the police department. One, who was instrumental in helping us apprehend a criminal, and two, individuals who stopped to help people in need. So, I would first like to call up to the front Todd Frank Burgess. Mr. Burgess was instrumental in helping us arrest a criminal on July 28, 2003. You were traveling westbound on Interstate 10 when you noticed a vehicle weaving in and out of traffic and weaving within his own lane as well. You dialed 911 on your cellular phone and spoke with the California Highway Patrol, informing them of the driver you believed to be driving on the influence. You gave the dispatcher the license plate of the vehicle in question, and the call was disconnected. The dispatcher called you back to tell you that the vehicle in question was stolen and asked you to follow the vehicle until they could get law enforcement personnel to help you. The police department was notified by the California Highway Patrol that a citizen was following a stolen vehicle and had just exited Interstate onto Indian Avenue. You followed the vehicle into a gas station and then waited for the arrival of the police officers. Officers from our department arrived on scene. You made contact with them. You were able to give a description of the driver and identified the driver as he walked out of the building towards the vehicle. The officers arrested the driver of the vehicle and took him into custody. A search of the vehicle revealed numerous stolen items, allowing several cases to be solved. You're hereby awarded the citizens' commendation for your willingness to become involved. Your actions allowed not only a car thief to be arrested, a stolen vehicle to be recovered, and other stolen items to be recovered as well. Thank you very much, Mr. Burgess.[483.62][483.62](APPLAUSE). Do you have your speech ready?
Chief, did you reimburse him for his gasoline?
Have you stand right up there. Stand up on the top there, so everybody can see you. On April 16, 2003, you were a witness to a traffic collision at Visachino and Sunrise. Involvement in this collision was a woman who was in labor and about to give birth. Prior to the accident, the pregnant woman's sister was driving her to the hospital because she was ready to give birth. Sister entered the intersection with her lights flashing and honking her horn, but unfortunately she drove through a red light at the intersection and was struck by another motorist. The collision disabled both vehicles. You witnessed the collision and then offered your assistance to police personnel at the scene. Our community service officer, Tom Crocecheer, was on scene and discovered that the expectant mother was trapped in the passenger side of the vehicle because the door was stuck. CSO Crocecheer was panicking, noticed that her water had broken, and she knew she was about to deliver a child at any moment. You assisted him in forcibly opening the door of the vehicle. You were able to recline the passenger seat to make the expectant mother more comfortable as the ambulance arrived. A few moments later, the mother delivered a healthy baby girl. You are hereby awarded the citizens' commendation for your willingness to become involved and your ability to stay calm amidst the chaos. Your actions enabled the safe birth of a healthy baby.[590.04][590.04](APPLAUSE). That was more than you bargained for, huh, Mr. Padilla? Diane is a nurse at Desert Hospital. She's been a nurse there for 11 years. She is receiving the police department's Citizen Medal of Valor. Now, in the audience is your supervisor, Vicky Heisman, there. The chief nursing officer, Pam Cagney, back there. And Mrs. Cagney represents the Desert Regional Medical Center, Tennant's Desert Regional Medical Center. On March 28, 2003, the police department responded to an injury collision involving a motorcycle at Takwitz and Sunrise. Upon arrival, our personnel found you administering life-saving first aid to the motorist. You happened upon the collision and immediately offered your assistance to the motorcyclist. Our officers recognized you as a nurse from Desert Hospital. The report from the hospital on the motorcyclist stated the subject has a severed aorta along with internal injuries. Your medical training enabled you to assess the injury and administer first aid until he could be transported to the hospital. You're commended for your willingness to become involved. It was your immediate actions that saved the motorcyclist's life. You are hereby awarded the citizens' Medal of Valor for your heroic actions which saved Mr. Mayor, do you want me to continue on the swearing-in? If I could have Officers Pedro Nanyez, Christopher Duthaller, and Gil Fernandez come forward. Give you a little background on these officers. Pedro Nanyez was born in California and moved to Mexico when he was five years of age. He grew up in the state of Zacatecas, Mexico. He graduated high school and then completed one year of a university. He put himself through the San Diego County Sheriff's Academy while he worked in the flower production industry. He graduated from the police academy and became a police officer with the Palm Springs Police Department on December 1, 2003. He's continuing his education. He's working on his AA degree. With him tonight is his brother Ricardo. Is Ricardo here? He's waving. Sister Claudia, and he's coming down, isn't he? And Claudia's husband Eric. Girlfriend Alejandra, her sister Gracie, and you have various amounts of friends here tonight. Pedro's parents are here. Pedro's parents are still in Mexico, and they could not attend tonight. So, we have now Christopher Duthaller. Chris comes to us after playing Major League Baseball. He was on the Cincinnati Reds farm team. He graduated from the police academy January 16. He is married, has a son, has two children, a son Dylan, and he has a daughter who's 23 months, or your daughter is nine months. Okay, let me get this. Two children, son Dylan, who is 23 months, and your daughter is? Very good. And then your wife's name is? You're going good, all right. You want to wave? There you go. And his mother Sharon, his brother Richard, and his aunt and uncle, and, well, you just have a whole bunch of people here as well. Next, we have Gil Fernandez. He grew up in the Coachella Valley. He served in the U.S. Marine Corps, and he saw combat in Iraq during the Desert Storm in 1991. Interesting story about Gil. He is really an officer with determination. We initially hired him back in October 2002, and he realized he wasn't quite ready for the physical training involved, so he came back out of the academy. He had time to regroup, and we rehired him back in January of 2003, and he went back to the academy, this time in top-notch shape. He was in the top percentage of his class. He completed 13 weeks in a 24-week course. Now, he had already completed his physical fitness agility and obtained a score, but it wasn't good enough for him. So, he went back out on his own because he wanted to get a higher score, and when he did, he went out and injured his knee. So, when he hurt his knee, he couldn't complete the rest of the academy. We literally had his academy peers come down to the police department. We had the staff come down here and ask us not to terminate him. They said he's a great guy. He was a role model for the academy. So, what we did is we made him a community service officer. We let him recoup on his knee, and then he went back, and he completed the academy, and this time, he graduated on December 15. And he graduated at the top of his class. So, here tonight with him is his, he's married, and he has his 10-year-old here, and his wife Joyce and Reuben are here someplace, right? Somewhere out there. Next, what we're going to do is the swearing-in. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.
Pedro Nanyez. Christopher Duthaller.
You hear me, ladies?
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And I take this obligation freely.
And I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, officer.[1031.23][1031.23](APPLAUSE).
Welcome, good luck.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
I love you.
My pleasure.
Congratulations.
We will be going back over to the police department, but I'm going to leave Commander Hall. He will be your sergeant of arms, and entrust him his security to you.
Thank you. We'll continue with our agenda, reporting on the posting of the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the agenda you have before you was posted in accordance with council procedures last Friday. The council did receive additional materials regarding number nine. Those were facts to the council, so you should have received those by fax. They're in, item number four is in the yellow packet before you. Item four, that's the settlement agreement. In addition, item two on your consent agenda will be asked to be continued to next Wednesday for an adjourned meeting. Item number 15 and items number 18 are being withdrawn. So, that's item two for, on the consent agenda for next week. Item 15 and 18 are being withdrawn.
Did we get all those? 15 and 18. Okay. Thank you. Closed session report.
Yes, council agents met in closed session. For the agency, the item involving VIP Motors was not discussed. Real property negotiations with Gabay concerning the dump site, we gave a status report. No action was taken. The item, Star Canyon Resorts, JB Gold, that item was discussed. It is on your agenda for public action tonight. The item with, on the winter parcel, the agency discussed in closed session the exercise of the option to acquire that parcel. By a vote of three to two, the council decided to go ahead and exercise the option to acquire that parcel. The votes, the positive votes were the mayor, councilmembers Mills and Pugnay, and the negative votes were councilmember Voet and McCullough. With regards to the litigation matter involving the Prairie Schooner parcel, we gave a status report concerning settlement negotiations. Direction was given for further discussions for the city real property negotiations concerning the Desert Water Agency, the waste water treatment plant. Gave a status report on negotiations. Direction was given for further negotiations. The items involving the Burr Group, Shadow Rock, Greyhound, and the Golf Course Hotel were not discussed. The litigation item involving Center for Biological Diversity, which is the classic project, we gave a status report. That item is on the agenda for action tonight. Litigation matter involving Lanka, there was a direction given for further negotiations. Wilson, a status report was given, no action was taken. The Eldorado matters, a status report was given, no action was taken, and the other items on exposure to litigation, initiation of litigation were not discussed.
The Housing Authority, the Financing Authority, the Industrial Development Authority, and the Community Redevelopment Agency. I have no business this evening, and we will, the City Council, we'll move to City Council, and we will open public comments at this time. I have two cards, Charles Goodballack and Annie Duggar. If you please come forward at this time, you will have three minutes. Please give your name to the clerk. Good evening, welcome.
Hi, I'm Annie Duggar, and I'm a member of a 12-step program that meets here on Friday evenings, generally from 6 to about 9 o'clock. We occupy this space, and I'm just here tonight to see if there might be any chance of decreasing the rent that we pay for that nightly meet. And we meet once a week on Fridays. Like I said, we basically occupy the space from 6 to 9. Our program, we're self-supporting through our own contributions, and I've just now taken over being secretary of that meeting, and I've just heard throughout the course of the meeting I've been going to that we've had a hard time collecting funds, and I know we have for the last two and a half years paid rent, been on time on rent, and just thought I'd bring it to the board to see if we might be able to decrease rent. That's it. Thanks.
And thank you. Good evening, and welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. How are you? Councilmembers, staff, and fellow citizens. My name's Alex Yaren. I'm a member of CLGA, Citizens for Local Government Accountability. We are a group of Palm Springs area residents determined to end city subsidies to the Aguacaliente Casino. I'm here addressing the issue of the proposed convention center expansion. As I understand the argument, the convention center currently operates at a $5 million annual loss to the taxpayer. The justification for this condition is that it benefits the city by bringing in more than enough revenues in the nature of transient occupancy taxes paid by hotels, sales tax, et cetera. We don't necessarily disagree with that logic. However, now the city is considering expanding the convention center and taking on $40 million of additional debt. And there is talk of changing the entrance way, which currently faces east, to face west, so that it will open directly onto the parking lot owned by the city but built by and currently used by the casino for their patrons. While one can understand the logic of subsidizing a convention center if it makes for a greater income from the existing tax base, how can one justify going into further debt to benefit an entity which is not and has no intention of ever becoming part of that tax base? An entity which, by the city's own report, already requires the city to spend an additional $500,000 a year just in police activity, an activity for which the tribe seemingly has no intention of reimbursing the city, police activity which may even force the city to levy a new citywide assessment to pay for. It must stop at some point because the city will be bankrupt if it keeps giving away the farm each time the tribe makes a demand. The only solution is for the city to enter into a fair share agreement with the tribe so that the casino pays its own way. Whether that happens before the city declares bankruptcy or after is up to this council. Furthermore, we submit that tonight's action is vulnerable to a lawsuit under SEQA because the revised project being approved tonight is substantially different from what was described in the May 7, 2003 SEQA statement. You are going to cut the amount of parking in half, thereby violating your own EIR. And to illustrate the need for haste in arriving at a fair share agreement, today, the Aguacaliente Tribe filed an initiative to amend the state constitution. The amendment would give them unlimited slots, no limit on size or scope of their casino. There would be no off-reservation impact mitigation. Their fair share would be equal to 8% corporate tax, which would be a discretionary government-to-government payment, meaning our city would not necessarily see any of it. The constitutional amendment includes a 99-year compact, so there would never be another chance to negotiate with the tribe in our lifetime. You must act quickly, or the chance will be gone forever. And I have a copy which I will provide to the city clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles Goodballack, please. Thank you for your patience. Good evening, and welcome.
Good evening. My name is Charles Goodballack with Jim Webber and Associates. On December 16, 2003, Jim Webber and Associates submitted the lowest bid for the residential sound insulation program. This is item six on your agenda tonight. Amount of our bid was $1,479,000. This amount was approximately $75,000 lower than the second bidder. When this project was bid the first time, we were not the lowest bidder, but you threw out all the bids and asked the three pre-approved contractors to resmit bids for this project. We went back and reviewed our cost of labor materials and subcontractors to see where we could reduce our job cost. We sat down with our asbestos abatement contractor and reviewed the list of houses in your specifications, including sections 2080-1 that contained asbestos materials. According to this section, there are only 11 houses out of the 68 houses that contain asbestos materials in the sheet rock. I presented a list of these houses with the amount of the asbestos in each of the house and the cost of each house to Harold Good for his review. Our asbestos abatement contractor reduced his price to us to approximately $6,800. The reason that we did not list him on the bid form was that his bid was less than one-half of 1% of our total bid amount. We have been advised by our attorney that subcontract work that is less than one-half of 1% does not need to be listed on the list of subcontractors. We have reviewed the bid protest with our attorney. He feels that Jim Webber and Associates is in full compliance with the project specifications and the California state laws. We feel that we are the lowest responsive bidder and that we should be awarded this contract. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lucia Moran. Good evening, and welcome.
Good evening. I have some pictures here. I don't know if the council wants to take a look at them, on a community cleanup that we held in the Gateway Desert Highland Community on January the 10th. This was a cleanup that was sponsored by Century Vintage Homes, the city of Palm Springs, Palm Springs Disposal, and Waste Management of the Desert. It was an absolutely fabulous day out there. We had 54 volunteers from the community that went out, picked up trash in vacant lots on the street. We had people come in from the community. One in particular that I know of is Gail Moore of the 222 Club of Palm Springs. All went out there, picked up trash. Century paid for a barbecue at the end of the day, and all of the volunteers, including, there were eight county employees with two big trucks that went all around the neighborhood. All the citizens had to do was leave the stuff out by the street, and these guys just worked their tails off. So, I just wanted to let you know, they picked up over 14 tons in just the one day, plus Rick Wade from Palm Springs Disposal very graciously left an extra bin, and boy, oh boy, you're going to see, if you look at these pictures, you're going to see what he, he said, "We'll deal with that on Monday, Lucia. Don't worry about it." Well, the following, this last Saturday, Century took a skip loader over there. Rick put out three more. put out three more bins, and the very last picture that you will see is where it's all cleaned up with a little smiley face. It was wonderful. Some people I want to thank, Mike O'Connor with the county, Paul Dufrain, they had, all the dump fees were waived for that day. Rick Wade with Palm Springs Disposal, everything I asked for, he very graciously donated. This is outside his city contract. And then, on Martin Luther King Day, we had 14 Vista AmeriCorps volunteers that came out, and we did a little paint. It was, all we could get to was the trim on many houses, but we went out and we painted, we had 45 gallons of paint that we bought. What was left over, we took over to Angie Patrick of that neighborhood, and she is gonna make sure that the rest of the neighborhood is gonna volunteer, they're gonna go out there, they're gonna be painting a lot of different fashions and trim, and it is amazing. The whole, everyone in the community has been wonderful. Some city people I want to say thank you to, Rebecca Clark, Elaine with Recycling, James Ruglee, and of course Angie, and Frank Ware, and one more person, very quickly, Bud England with Dunn Edwards Paint, gave us all the paint at cost. Thank you very much.
And thank you. That's a good point. That's being a good neighbor. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in public comments? Now, if you're speaking on a public hearing issue, we will call those names during, when the item is called. Please come forward, give your name to the clerk. You'll have three minutes.
My name is Susan Wasserman. Good evening, and congratulations on a fabulous grand opening for the new Palm Springs Skate Park. My name is Susan Wasserman, and my children and all of their friends were there to enjoy it. However, I come before you again regarding the skate park fee schedule. I understand the issue is on an agenda to be reconsidered, and I thank Mayor Oden for inviting me to email him concerning that. I did email you today, but wanted to present the points from that email in case discussions about fee revision are already underway. As I stated during public comments at the December 3 and January 7 City Council meetings, as Cathedral City residents, it would cost us $2,600 a year for our two sons to skate at the new Palm Springs Skate Park five days a week for a year. Although we've been Cathedral City residents for 20 years, our children have always attended Palm Springs schools, including Cielo Vista and Catherine Finchey Elementary, Raymond Creek Middle School, and now our ninth grader is just yards from the new skate park at Palm Springs High School. Most of his friends are Palm Springs residents who can skate there every day after school. I did a quick internet and phone survey of Southern California skate parks. In cities big and small, 54 out of 67 skate parks with square footages from 2,000 to 40,000 square feet were free, with the remaining ones offering varying nominal fees regardless of city residents. Only Palm Springs excludes non-residents for membership. Of particular interest is that three other top-rated comparable skate parks, Lake Forest Etneys at 40,000 square feet, Chino at 20,600 square feet, and Fontana at 20,000 square feet are free. I would like to see the fee schedule returned to the original idea prior to whatever input was received in November 2003 that led to the elitist fee schedule. That idea was a flat $10 annual membership fee without regard to residents. So far, we have contributed, my family has contributed $100 donation in January 2003 to help build the skate park, and our daily use fees totaled $70 as of the 14th of this month. The original resolution 20789 allowed the same annual use fee for residents and non-residents. If the council must view their neighbors as outsiders, please don't make us foot the bill of this skate park with fees 260 times or even 10 times that of Palm Springs residents. I would suggest the same annual fee or two to three times that if you feel we must bear that burden. Thank you again, Mr. Oden, and the City Council members for this opportunity to share my concerns about the skate park fee schedule.
And thank you. If there's no one else, then we will close our public comments. And we will move on to our consent agenda. I would ask that we would pull number six for a staff report in separate vote.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills.
I will be abstaining on item six for business purposes, and have one warrant of abstention on number eight. Look at that pen the city clerk has, look at that thing. 993840, business-related.
Counsel, are there any others?
I would move the agenda with item six being pulled separate, and then I'll leave.
And item two being removed.
Correct.
We have a motion.
Second that.
Second by Councilmember Pugnay. Roll call.
Ms. Vogt.
Aye.
Mr. McCullough.
Aye.
Mr. Mills.
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor.
Aye. Passage unanimously. And staff report on item number six.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I would ask Mr. Harold Good, our Director of Procurement, to give the staff report and the explanation. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this item is for residential sound insulation project. It's 90% funded by the federal government, and it's bid under federal rules. It's basically sound insulation for private homes in this particular phase, which is Phase Four of the project surrounding the airport. We bid this project once, and we had three qualified, pre-qualified bidders. This is a specialty area where a particular type of contractor that's experienced with this, does this work, airports all over Southern California. We had three of those that participate all the time in this kind of project submit a bid on previous phases. In this particular phase, on Phase One, two of them submitted a bid, there were problems with both bids, we had City Council reject the bids, and we basically started over and rebid the project. This particular time, we opened bids, and we again had two bidders, and the second low bidder lodged a protest saying that the bid of the lowest bidder didn't conform. And the area which they pointed out that it didn't conform in was the abatement of hazardous material, notably lead and asbestos. And we looked at the protest, with our legal counsel Fred Galante looked at it in a lot of depth. We looked at the history of the project and what the abatement cost in previous phases because the issue, as was brought up by one of the speakers in public comments, is whether this work, they had to list a subcontractor and whether it was over one-half of 1% of the total value of the project. Because public contract code says you have to list a subcontractor if it's more than half of 1% of the work. Additionally, the air quality rules are that if there's more than 100 square feet of asbestos, that work cannot be self-performed. Either the contractor has to have a specialty license for asbestos, or it has to be subcontracted. We looked exhaustively at this, we solicited the opinion of the architect who had been involved in our other projects, our consultants, the previous low bidders that had been awarded previous projects, and the amount of the project that had been spent on abatement in the previous projects. Because the mix of homes, residential homes, is about the same for each phase, it's just a number that varies. After an exhaustive study, our recommendation is to uphold the protest because we could not find anything other than the second phase bid that's under a hundred, under a half of percent, but everything else we looked at suggested that indeed it would cost significantly more, and they should have listed a subcontractor. And they cannot self-perform the work which they agree with because of the, it's more than 100 square feet of asbestos. And that completes my report, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, no questions. So you're saying that it was above the one-half of the 1% where they did not list their specific subcontractors?
They did not list a subcontractor, yes. And their argument is that they didn't list the subcontractor because it's less than one-half of 1%. And indeed, today, they produced a quote from a subcontractor that is less than one-half of 1%. That's the first time we saw that. We forwarded that to the attorney, but the attorney, Fred Galante, is still recommending that we uphold the protest, mainly because every other person involved in the project and the experience with previous phases of the project and similar work suggests that this work would cost a lot more.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, so what you're saying is that they could not, that it's not feasible that the bid of what would be $6,000 would be feasible for doing that asbestos abatement?
In our opinion based on history.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve consent item number six.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Vogt. Roll call.
Ms. Vogt.
Aye.
Mr. McCullough.
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor.
Aye. It passes for one abstention. No extended consent agenda. We'll move to our public hearing, case number five.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Nothing. [laughter]
Just wanted to be recognized.
Yes, I do like that colorful pig you have. Case number 5.935, Desert Chapel, 630 South Sunrise Way.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills.
I will be abstaining on number nine and on number 10, and then I'm the architect on both projects. Thank you.
So you get all the breaks.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like a report from the city attorney on a possible conflict I have on item number nine.
Yes, we discussed this matter earlier today. There's two potential bases of conflict. As I understand, your children go to the Desert Chapel School, and you pay the going rate for their attendance there. Based upon that information, there's two potential issues on the conflict of interest. The first is whether, under the Political Reform Act, you have a financial conflict of interest. And if you are paying, if you're not receiving any sort of a discount or financial benefit, you're paying the going rate, then I don't believe you have any financial interest. So I believe as a technical conflict under the Political Reform Act, you don't have a conflict. However, there's a concept called the common law rules of conflict. These are not based upon statute, they're based upon case precedent. The development of the cases in this area has been in a fairly broad manner, and it's, the standard is not real clear. However, if there is, the issue in essence goes to whether or not the parties will receive a fair hearing, and whether your involvement is such that you would be influenced and not decide things on the merits of the information presented. We talked about the, because your children are in this school, the potential that this particular project would enhance their school environment, and that that might affect your orientation and objectivity in this manner. And if you believe that it would affect your objectivity, then under the common rule rules, it would be better that you abstain and not participate.
Mr. Mayor, I think that all of us up here constantly grapple with whether or not we're objective or not, and I think that, I feel that I could maintain my objectivity. However, I like, I think there would be an appearance, certainly an appearance, that there's a conflict here, and because of that, I think I'll recuse myself from this item, number nine.
Well, that certainly changes the picture that I expected to see on this issue. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is a requested amendment to the master plan, and I would ask Doug Evans, our Director of Planning and Zoning, to give a staff report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Mr. Reddy is passing out the conditions of approval for special events that were actually adopted by the Planning Commission. I'll go through those in summary form in prepping for the meeting tonight. I realize that in the wonderful world of clip, staff reports and moving things around, we clipped off a whole bunch of what the Planning Commission actually adopted, and we'd like to insert this, and at the end of my report, I'll tell you where we would insert it, and it's fairly straightforward relative to those conditions, but they're much more extensive than what you had in your report and address some of the concerns that were raised in letters. Desert Chapel has had a number of projects before the city. They initially started as a church facility. They then added a school facility, they've added additional amenities over the years, including a ball field. And, you know, before you tonight is an amendment to the Plan Development District, which is their overall master plan for this facility, to add classrooms, a nursery, an administrative building, a new special events area, and then establish regulations regarding the time, place, and manner of special events, including nighttime football games, subject to conditions of approval. We've given you a lot of background material, and I'm not about to try to go through all of it in an oral staff report, so I'm gonna allow the council to ask questions based upon the staff report, but I'd like to give you a quick overview. The Planning Commission has had a series of meetings and public hearings on this round of revisions to Desert Chapel. The Planning Commission has made recommendations to you at different meetings, at continued hearings, because we were working with some of the neighbors, Mesquite Country Club, to try to resolve issues all the way through this, and it was really an interactive process where the commission would have a meeting, we'd discuss items at a hearing, and then we sat down and had several meetings with the Mesquite Country Club people to come up with what we thought was the best balance, and what your Planning Commission felt was a good balance. And at least at the Planning Commission hearing, it appeared that the Mesquite Country Club Homeowners Association was comfortable, provided that the operational conditions were complied with. From the standpoint of those operational conditions, I'd like to start with special events first. The conditions of approval that the commission adopted were really crafted at a meeting with representatives of Desert Chapel and Mesquite Country Club, and I think represented the best collective effort that day relative to activities. Special events, just going very quickly through, three special events per year, temporary lighting and generators cannot extend past 9:00 PM. Lighting plan for special events to be reviewed and approved by the staff. One-day duration in special events, loudspeakers to comply with the city noise ordinance, as well as not be an interference with the peace and quiet of the neighbors. Written notice of those events to the neighbors two weeks in advance so that they're aware of what's going to occur. And then the sixth one on special events, the commission reserves the right to revoke special events privileges if Desert Chapel doesn't comply. Football games, Desert Chapel started originally with a sod football field, they played during the day. Two seasons ago, they started nighttime football games, they did not notify the city. We found out about it via complaints when the lights started going up, you know, for those football games. And actually, I think we got our first call about midway through the actual season, and it was immediately after a special event that the church allowed to use their property. It wasn't a church event, and it did shake up the neighborhood, it was a loud Christian music festival that, by I think all accounts, when we met with Mesquite Country Club, they didn't... Mesquite Country Club, they didn't, I mean, excuse me, Desert Chapel, they didn't realize that that type of event was going to occur, and it certainly wasn't planned. That caused a significant amount of neighborhood concern. I attended a meeting in Deepwell where we talked about it, and we had very distinct discussions about how loud that was. Concerts are not part of this proposal from the church. They're not part of the approval, and I don't think Desert Chapel would have another festival concert like that, because it just didn't fit the neighborhood, and it's really not what they intended to have happen. You can certainly ask them questions. Football games, you know, we worked with them for the first season on temporary events to see how it would work, trying to massage what would work and not work. They basically had a football schedule published with games ready to go, so the first season we worked with the church on an interim basis to try to work out how you could have nighttime football games. This past season, they basically operated under these guidelines for the football season. Basically says they could have up to 10 football games annually. That means they go all the way to CIF championship to have 10 games. Normally, they don't come close to 10 games unless they have a really good season. Talks about, you know, the teardown and setup, and then we do recognize that sometimes when you have a football game, something happens and you can't end it right on time. Injury, technical problem, so there's a provision for that. Lighting of the football to be reviewed and approved by the staff, we did. I went out and monitored the first football game myself. The lights were set up the way we had approved. I think in one particular instance, we had a situation where a light was shining the wrong way during a game, and I think we had that fixed. It was actually shining towards the Mesquite Country Club Homeowners Association, which should not have happened, and I believe that was fixed, and I'm not sure that I heard that it was a reoccurring problem, but we'll probably hear tonight if it was. The, Desert Chapel is to provide key administrative personnel cell phone numbers so people can call if they have problems. Should be kept updated, and, you know, so that anybody in Mesquite Country Club would have the ability to call them directly and deal with that. Security guards until 11:00 PM during football games. The northeast parking lot, which is the closest to the condominiums, to be used for overflow only. Typically, these are not the same type of football games that you see at Palm Springs High. It's eight-man football. They don't have the same type of crowd, but that was intended to try to keep the parking and activity away. You know, there's some general criteria relative to leaf blowers, which were a concern, late-night use of sports courts, and you can take a look at those conditions of approval. What we'd recommend is you insert these into the approval as a revised Exhibit A, and we'll do that with the city clerk if the council's comfortable with those conditions. We apologize for not having them in the staff report, and it's a good thing I took a look at it right before the meeting. From the standpoint of the other activities that they're proposing, I'd like to show you the exhibits on the board, and I can explain those to you, and I think you can see how this all fits together. The overall master plan at Desert Chapel starts with Sunrise Way, Sunny Dunes. The sanctuary is located here. Classrooms, multipurpose classroom, a future administration building in this existing courtyard on the north, south side of the building, a first, a future nursery toddler area in here, which is a new building. This is the main campus and administration side of the facility with some teaching over here. The parking area has access off of Sunrise along the north property line. The hard court play area is located in this location, and the condominiums for Mesquite Country Club that are closest are shown here in this particular area just north of the Baristo Channel that's in this location. Sunny Dunes bisects the property, and then the rest of the campus includes multipurpose room, classrooms in this area, which is the primary school, and then future classrooms. So everything that you're looking at in the, this proposal has to do with these areas, these areas, this area, and then the use of the playfield, football field, and then, you know, special event activities. One of the issues that the, initially Desert Chapel asked to have dealt with has to do with a right-of-way issue and an easement issue, and subsequently, that request was withdrawn. Essentially, the city vacated Sunny Dunes. The Desert Chapel had to grant easements through here to Mesquite Country Club Golf Course, Desert Water Agency, the homeowners association. The homeowners association in Mesquite could never get the type of insurance with all the provisions that were required. That obviously was a concern to Mesquite Homeowners Association, and initially, Desert Chapel asked to rededicate this roadway. They've subsequently withdrawn that request, and a fairly simple solution to the access easement, there's an existing bridge in this location that ties in to Sunny Dunes. They're working on actually upgrading that bridge, taking it out, putting a new one, so the homeowners association can have access across the bridge over to their maintenance area, and that would satisfy their need for access to the property. That's a fairly creative solution to a dilemma that we put some pretty good insurance agents in the room together to try to figure it out, and they could not get the insurance worked out. So the insurance issue, easement issue is off, off the table. It's not part of your action tonight. Insofar as how the property operates, you know, this is the primary parking area for football. The football lighting plan basically is shown very lightly. There are temporary light fixtures on poles with generators. They bring them in for the football games. They go away after the football games. They face the field along this side and this side, and then they have had one over in here that at the game, we did get a complaint that it was facing this way. And I think what they've tried to do is secure this area so people don't park, and that's the intent of the condition, to really keep the spectators over here, and they walk into the game and leave. We have received some letters. They're in your packet. I'll certainly try to answer as many questions as I can, and then I know the applicant's representatives are here to talk about their operation during the public hearing. Mr. Mayor, that completes our report.
If there are any questions, before we open the public hearing, if not, then I will open the public hearing at this time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I have a letter that I received immediately before the meeting from Mr. Michael Connors, and he is submitting a protest against this item for the record.
Okay. I have cards.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
While we're hearing public testimony, could we get that letter copied so that we would have that information? Thank you.
The first name that I have is Ken Husky, followed by Gary Skinner. Please come forward, give your name to the clerk. You will have five minutes. Good evening.
Five and not three? You're very generous. Ken Husky, Seven Palomino, I live in Deepwell. I've been in the area about 25 years, the Deepwell area. We're a neighbor of this project, and I own multiple properties in the vicinity. My background is in a lot of things, including coaching. I've been coaching for about 30 years. Pony League, Little League, soccer, basketball. My wife's an educator, substitute teacher. She teaches at all the schools in the valley. And one of the things we know about our kids is that when they're engaged, they're, and when they're active, they're good kids. They tend to stay out of troubles, stay off drugs, all that, and so I'm pro-youth, including this project right here. Right down the street from here, you folks spend a lot of money building a skate park for the very same reason, a very nice skate park, so our kids have something to do, a way to keep them active and to keep them involved and keep them engaged. The students at this high school, Desert Chapel, have something to do on Friday nights. We call it football. We're a little selfish here in Palm Springs. We only show the city of Palm Springs. We have nine cities down here, but all those cities do the same thing. All their high schools flip their lights on on Friday night, and they play football. I've been to numerous games on this campus, and also at Palm Springs High School, where one of my sons went, and it's a delight to go there and see hundreds of our local kids there to watch a football game, support their team, play in the game, play in the band, whatever they do. So I'm pro-youth activities, and certainly in favor of anything we can do to accommodate these kids playing, playing ball here. It's a minor thing, but also, these folks that come here for these games come from other communities. When they do come here, they spend money on gas, and they spend money on food, and perhaps some of them even stay in our hotels, I don't know, but there's some economic benefit from that, from that as well. Those of us who've been around a long time here in this neighborhood, I know many of the people here in the room have been, recall that where Desert Chapel used to be, is now, there used to be an old golf course there, an old driving range, and it was an eyesore. They let it run down, there was a whole beat-up building there, and then a nursery showed up, and behind the nursery, a large dump supply of stuff in the back there. And this, these folks at this school cleaned it up and turned it into a fairly handsome-looking campus right now, so I salute them for having done that. I just want to close by saying that I think we're really lucky here in Palm Springs. We are having a population explosion, it's causing the housing market to go crazy down here. There's a lot of value added, and there's a price for that, and part of the price is we have more people here. And those people are on our highways, they're, we have more traffic. We also have, we also have kids, and those kids are going to go to school, and those kids need to have activities. For my money, I'd rather have every kid in the valley who's in a high school at some kind of athletic event on a Friday night, and engaged and involved in doing something productive, like is being proposed here for this high school at Desert Chapel. And I thank you for your time.
And thank you. Gary Skinner, followed by Frank Marsh. Good evening, you'll have five minutes.
Thank you, good evening. My name's Gary Skinner. I've been in this community since 1970. Basically, I've been at Palm Springs High School for 34 years as a teacher and coach. For two years, I have had the opportunity also to coach a football team at Desert Chapel, and as mentioned, that we might have a few extra games in the five normal home games. We did go to semifinals in Southern California our first year, and to the state championship our second year, which did add a couple more games to our schedule. But also note, too, our football team has roughly between 14 to 20 players on our team each year, and somewhere between five to seven games that we're talking about are seven nights, five to seven nights that we're talking about tonight. I was a part of meeting and speaking in front of the planning commission, where we were trying to work with Mesquite Country Club and their owners regarding what is necessary to make the both, both Desert Chapel and Mesquite work together. We felt that with that, from that meeting that night, we have obliged to what was asked of us to do, and as basically as the things that were brought up tonight, we had a lighting expert come out to help us to direct the lights, so the lights were in our part on the football field into the residence of Mesquite. We banned and didn't have any parking there on the north side of our, or, excuse me, the east side of our church, so that there would be no noise or driving problems there. We even had half of our lighting, portable lighting fixtures, we had, electricity ran out, so there wouldn't be generators, so we had less, half the lights were not being run by generators to help cut down the noise, to try to cooperate on this type of thing. To my knowledge, we have all done, Desert Chapel's done what has been asked of us to do. You have supported, as our community, our skate park, you've supported Palm Springs High School and the homecoming parade, basically, our city supporting our youth, and that's why I'm standing here tonight, saying 35 years of my life has been coaching and working with our youth. These are all positive steps, and I'm asking the council tonight to continue making those positive steps. As I said, I've coached football, baseball, swimming, wrestling, and I know what a positive effect athletics have on our community and our school. I feel that few people have had complaints, and I understand, but I'm here to say the youth should prevail. We're asking for just a few nights, and I'm asking that you continue to support the youth of our community. The activities are necessary to keep them off the streets. Yes, there is some cheering at a football game, or isn't there? And I don't think that that noise factor should be something that should be negatively stricken or asked of, instead of the, look at the positive that's happening, and our youth are doing something constructive out there, and the family and friends and community members have a chance to support that. So tonight, I'm asking you as a city council to please pass and allow Desert Chapel to have its football games continue. Thank you very much.
Frank Marsh, followed by Dr. John Stevens. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. My name is Frank Marshall, and I am the administrator at Desert Chapel, and I'd like to say, make a couple of points for you tonight, just, well, three points, and just make a concluding remark to you. And the three points I want to make are this. Desert Chapel serves the spiritual needs of the community, not exclusively us, others as well, but we, we have a vital part in the, in the, in the community in addressing spiritual needs of the community. So we have that. We also are structuring our activities. That's what's taking place with this application, and we are sensitive to the needs and to the conditions of our neighbors, and I want to emphasize those three things. And we serve the, as I mentioned, serve the spiritual needs of the community. That's what we do. We are privileged to have some 3,500 families in the community that call Desert Chapel their home church, and approximately 350 of those families have chosen to have their children enrolled in our school. And we, we obviously hold church services. We hold various Bible study groups and other study groups for the community and for members of our congregation, and we hold social activities for little kids, for teenagers, for young adults, for parents, and for senior citizens. So, so those are the, those are the things that we're doing spiritually to input into the community here in Palm Springs. What this application is about is us structuring our activities and structuring our operation or our ministry here in Palm Springs. Growth, I think, is a good thing. I hope that we would all feel that way, that, that growth is a good thing, but it does need to be handled properly and decently and in order, and that's what this application is for. Doug mentioned earlier that we were, we had, we have defined a new special events area. It's only new in the sense of the definition. The things that we have requested are events that we have done for many, many, many years. We've, we have for 20 years or more had a, what we call Harvest Festival on Halloween night. The event is over fairly early. We project 8:30, year in and year out. Occasionally, there may, Halloween may occur on a weekend, as it did this year, and we made some provisions and agreements with the neighbors to go a little bit longer on that type of night. We've done that for years. We've also, for years, on the first Sunday in December, held a Christmas sing-along in our patio. So all we're doing here is quantifying and trying to work with our neighbors, to be sensitive to their needs and concerns, to, to put the things down that we know that we're going to do, that we have always done, and we generally have had pretty good success with them in the past. And we've also put in our structuring, we've put into places, as Doug has mentioned, a means of monitoring and getting feedback and getting communication going, so that we have cell phone numbers, so that neighbors can speak with their board members, and so that we can have communication that goes back and forth, so that we can make any adjustments, make any corrections. We know that we don't always succeed, but we are trying, and, and that's our heart to do so. And in that regard, my third point was just that we are sensitive, and I know that maybe some of our neighbors feel that we're not sensitive enough. Our heart is to be sensitive to our neighbors. We realize that this is a community where we all have to live together, and we want to live together. So, for example, if I, if I may, we, we had a leaf blower problem with the past president of the association who wrote me a letter this past March and said, "Leaf blowers are going off before 7:00 in the morning. We appreciate that you want to keep your facility clean, but our homeowners would appreciate if you would do something about that." Now, I've instructed our maintenance staff not to do that. I've instructed our gardeners not to do that before, but it doesn't always happen. But in this case, you know, we got after it right away, and in, within three weeks, I had a thank you note from the president of the association. Dear Frank, thank you for resolving the matter. resolving the matter with the leaf blowers." So we have had some successes, and we want to have more successes, and I think that's dependent upon us having good communication. And concluding, the planning commission, we went through several meetings, as was earlier spoken. At the final commission meeting, Commissioner Matthews commended both the neighborhood and Desert Chapel, as is in your minutes, for getting together and working things out better. The chairman, Chairman Schoenberger thanked also the homeowners association and Desert Chapel for meeting and resolving their issues. So I just want to conclude by saying thank you to the staff and to the city council for making it possible for us to all work and live together. And I'd like to ask you to agree with the planning commission who voted unanimously to approve this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. John Stevens, followed by Barbara Beatty. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is John Stevens, and I have moved to Palm Springs recently. I'd like to speak for a moment just to the academic aspects of Desert Chapel High School. After 37 years in education, both as an educator and as a principal, and being selected national teacher of the year on two occasions, and retiring, I got a call from Desert Chapel High School asking if I would consider an interview to see if I would teach science for them at the high school level. In a trip here, I was quite impressed that the school would take on the task that they have in trying to, in the midst of a fairly chaotic world, especially in public education, to put together a system of academic excellence, a program of molding students to be sensitive to the needs of others, to be gentlemen and ladies, and to do things according to a moral standard, and do things that would honor and help the community. I've been here now six months and had an opportunity to see this in action. And I see the resolve and the determination from the whole staff and from the students there to make this a special place. I would think that Palm Springs, in my opinion, is fortunate to have this type of an educational facility. I see nothing but good coming from it. I see nothing of the typical chaos that could go on in a school situation happening here, but I see something that is a blessing all the way around. In my experience as I've moved from place to place, one of the first things I'd always asked in buying a house is, "What is the school situation? Are there good schools? Are there any close?" I see Desert Chapel High School as nothing but an asset to Palm Springs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Barbara Beatty, followed by Amanda Scott, and then Chelsea Abercrombie. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I see tonight that we have very two smart council members that have their children either presently going at Desert Chapel schools or have gone in the past, and I congratulate them for that. I'm a teacher at Desert Chapel High School, and I can say we have one awesome school, and we have some awesome students that felt that they should put their time aside tonight to come and let their opinions be known. Amanda will be the next one you hear. She has a biology final that she's got to study for tonight, but she's coming here tonight to let this be known. We have a great school, and we are producing awesome students. We have a former student at our school is now on the Palm Springs Police Department, and I think that we've done nothing other than contribute to the community. Our football games are great. I would welcome you to come out and join them. Come to our basketball games, too. We're having one Friday night. But we are just, we're an excited school. We're excited about the future, and I just hope that you would give us the liberty that we need to expand and make it a bright future for our youth here in the desert. It's exciting to see that we can make a difference here, that this little church has expanded. I've been here, like I say, over 40 years, and to see the progress of this little church and now school changing the lives of individuals, it's amazing. And I thank you for that opportunity, and I just really admonish you to give us that opportunity to continue that. Thanks so much.
And thank you. Amanda Scott, followed by Chelsea Abercrombie, and then Tracy Walsh. Good evening and welcome.
I've been a student at Desert Chapel since kindergarten. It's my life. It's my second home. I love that school. And just to see it, starting kindergarten, just watching it, you know, my mom has prayed since kindergarten, you know, "I'll let there be a high school for her to be." And I'm in that high school, you know, and it's just an awesome school, and to see it expand and to have Friday night football games, you know, that's high school, you know? Students love to go to football games and totally experience that. And it's just awesome that, you know, we can be a part of that, being such a small school, not being as big as other public schools, but that we can experience something like that. And thank you for letting that be part of our school, and the education there is just awesome. I've totally learned so much from there, and it's a great school, and I just love it. Thanks.
And thank you for coming. Chelsea, followed by Tracy Walsh, and then Russell White. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Chelsea Abercrombie, and I guess really what I'm just here to say is that athletics is a big part of my life. I mean, I play basketball and volleyball, and I've even played softball. And so football games, I guess, are just another part of my life, too. Like, I love going to football games. I mean, it's fun. Who wouldn't like them? So, and so, I mean, I don't know. I guess really what I'm saying is just to allow me to experience the same things as other students at Palm Springs High and other public high schools are able to go through with football and all the things like that. So I'm, that's it. Thank you.
And thank you. Tracy Walsh, Russell White, and then Janie Abercrombie. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Walsh, and I am a teacher at Desert Chapel. I just wanted to address the possible expansion, the proposed expansion of the buildings. As a teacher, I have a classroom that is used by many other people besides myself. I share a classroom with another teacher who teaches one period a day in there. Sundays, it's used for Sunday school. Monday and Tuesday evenings, and sometimes Wednesday evenings, it's used for study classes. And I just think that we would like to be able to add some additional classrooms, so we could ease some of those multiple-use issues that we have right now. We're doing it willingly and with gracious hearts currently, but it would be very nice if we could have some additional room to kind of spread ourselves out a little bit, and also to increase our student body. We have, as you've heard many people say, a wonderful campus of students, but our intent is to increase that and minister, as well as educate more young people in our community. So I would just ask that you would consider these recommendations that the planning commission has given as a positive and beneficial part for our city. So thank you very much.
And thank you. Russell White. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Russell White, Athletic Director and Head Football Coach at Desert Chapel High School. As we all know, most of us went to high schools where they did have Friday night games, and it's a big part of the culture at most high schools. It's a gathering place. It's a place where kids can come and just be themselves. It's a place where teachers can come and get involved in these kids' life. And for me, as a head coach of this football team, it's a special moment for them. They really enjoy playing the games at night, and I know in the past, they played in the daytime, but as of late, there's been some situations, medical-wise, where you can't play during the day because it's too hot. And as a head coach, that's the worst thing that can happen to you, is one of them kids falling out due to heat exhaustion. And I know practice is controlled, but a game is not. And to have one of them kids fall out during a hot season is a bad deal. So I'm just asking you, as a head coach and as a member of Desert Chapel, to allow us to have those 10 games. It's 10 games out of a year, and I don't think we're asking a lot. So as a member, again, I'm just asking the council to allow us to keep playing our games on Friday nights. Thank you.
Thank you. Janie Abercrombie, Ruthie Frazi, and Charlene LeBeau. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and fellow council members. I'm Janie Abercrombie, and I work, I'm on the administration for the high school. I'm the high school secretary in Junior High High School. And Chelsea Abercrombie is also my daughter, and she's been going there for about five years. And for us, having been involved as a parent to a student there, I saw what a wonderful way she's blossomed over the years. She was very quiet when she came to Desert Chapel, and she's loud and plays games now. She's involved in basketball, volleyball, and softball, and I've just watched her flourish, not only as a young lady, but just her whole value system, what she's all about. I've watched the teachers and the fellow administrators there give her so much to grow with. Football, we not only attend football herself, she invites her dad and I to go, too. So it's a family thing. We bring sisters, brothers, aunts, uncles, my grandchildren go there, too. It's a whole family atmosphere. We see people from all over the city come. We invite them to come, not only to see what we're all about and that it's clean, good, healthy, fun for everybody, but we are totally understanding of Mesquite and what they go through and their concerns. And I would just hope that you would understand and that you would allow us to have those games and continue to have these games there and to grow and be able to serve our community. I've not only seen our school and such serve just the immediate group of people, the students and families, but I've watched them reach out to our community. At Christmas time, they helped the families in the community who didn't have anything. And I've watched our students in high school and junior high, which just made me feel great as a parent, and somebody who lives in the community, reach out to the community, to those who were in need. So I would just, I would just hope that the council would take this into strong consideration and allow us to continue to grow within means and, you know, under supervision, but also continue to have our football games in the evenings. I thank you for your time.
And thank you. Ruthie Frazi, Charlene LeBeau, and Arthur McMillan.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, and to the new council members. I haven't come to speak in front of the new council before, but over a year ago, October, I came, and I was madder than heck, and I was probably the first one complaining about the Jesus shack. And there was a meeting at my house, like Doug Evans said, Mr. Readywood's there, and said, "Rest assured, it is not going to happen again." I have attended several of these planning meetings, and I have a little bit of a difference been on what you've been hearing. First of all, everybody wants what's good for our kids. I have two kids, almost three grandkids in another month. I want them to have an opportunity, but these are all choices. When you go to a private school, you can pick and choose if that's an appropriate school that has what you want for your child. I find this as a marketing ploy, number one. I didn't give my address because I always say it's on file, but I'm the first block west of Sunrise and the second house off of Mesquite. I'm not saying not in my backyard. I'm saying I don't want it in my bedroom. I don't want it in my kitchen. I don't want it in my dining room. I hear the concert, the football games. I'm not against sports. My husband's the biggest sports hound there is. In fact, he misses several events in our neighborhood because he's watching his sports. But I enjoy my window weather. I don't want to have to hear the noise. Mr. Husky was saying how the city had spent money on the skate park. You know what? I spent a lot of money on my house. I have a huge investment. As you all know, I had to rebuild it. We won't bring up any bad things here, but they want to grow, that's great. When I bought my house, there was that little nursery. There was a small church. Now we're talking about more and more and more. And when I was at those meetings, all I kept saying was, "What about the marching band? When is that going to come?" My daughter was in marching band, and we went from school to school. And I understand that that is part of school, but that was part of a public school system. I didn't choose to live and be surrounded. And item 10 is making me surrounded, if you look at what they're proposing on both sides of the street here. So I'm against it, and I ask you to consider how I feel as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlene.
I'm getting error on my number. I'm number 10.
Oh, okay, you want, okay. Then Arthur McMillan. Good evening and welcome.
Honorable Mayor, council members, my name is Arthur McMillan. I've been living at Mesquite Country Club full-time for 15 years. Back in 1999, I addressed the council during hearings at that time regarding my concerns about anticipated noise at Desert Chapel. I was assured by the planning department and by the city council that the proposed playing field was not going to become an evening football field. The master plan was written prohibiting Desert Chapel from holding evening football games. Safeguards for the surrounding neighborhood were also written into the plan. Condition 40, no public address system shall be allowed. Condition 17, all unpermitted night lighting shall be removed. Condition 39, evening outdoor activities at the site shall cease at 10:00 PM. Four years have now passed, and look at the record in your file. It shows the school has never followed the above conditions, still refused to follow them when the neighbors went to them asking for their compliance, and still refused to follow them when the city warned them to follow the above conditions or face action. It is documented in your file by Mr. Evans that Desert Chapel noise has disturbed residents over 1.25 miles from the church. And just imagine, my home is 80 feet from their property line. So tonight, what's the solution? Well, if you're a top city official with connections to the city planning department and church member and the architect, you advise Desert Chapel to just approach the city to have your master plan revised, so that all your violations can now be permitted and we'll take care of it, and that should quiet the neighbors. But guess what? We've had an election, and it's not business as usual at City Hall anymore. This is not much different from what occurred at Araby Cove and should be examined and addressed in the same way the new council addressed the Araby Cove issue. I also want the council to be aware that Mr. Marshall, at the recent planning commission meeting, stated at this podium that he can't be responsible for what happens on church property in the evening. Commissioner Matthews sternly told Mr. Marshall that he didn't buy that answer, and he needs to employ a security guard at night. So as Mr. Marshall heeded Mr. Matthews' warning, no, the violations continue. This January 3, it was after 10:30 PM when I grew tired of listening to another night of yelling and screaming coming from the church property. I dressed and walked over to the school and was appalled to find a dozen youths literally climbing up the outside wall of the three-story multipurpose building, making their way to the roof using the aluminum air conditioning vents as a ladder. Once up on the roof, they secured a rope to an air conditioning vent which sloped towards the football field, where it was secure to a football touchdown goalpost. The students were jumping off the three-story building and riding the rope using pulleys down towards the football field with absolutely no protection under them in case they fell onto a metal fence or the ground below. For the record, the students were being coaxed to jump by Pastor Houston, again, the only Desert Chapel employee on the entire property. Another recent occurrence is Mr. Marshall is fully aware he's not to use unpermitted nighttime lighting. This past October 6, the football lights were on in the field to allow for the construction of floats throughout the evening. Diane Fletcher, in charge of those students, stated she was told by Mr. Marshall to use the football field lights after 10:00 PM. Mr. Marshall also knows he's not supposed to be having any more outdoor concerts. On December 21, another concert was held in the outer courtyard of the church, just adjacent to our bedroom windows, which created an echo effect as the loudspeaker... adjacent to our bedroom windows, which created an echo effect as the loudspeakers and amplification system bellowed the music into the windows of our homes. As in the case of all their past concerts, neighbors have to endure the state setup, amplified rehearsal sessions, and finally, the concert itself. Mr. Marshall refuses to understand that this concert could easily have been held inside the walls of the multipurpose building, which is what this large building was constructed for, to contain the noise of the school's student activities. For the record, since 1999, out of 16 Mesquite condos that are closest to Desert Chapel, 12 homeowners have sold and moved out. Some of these condos have been sold more than once, have homeowners quickly sell and move, being unable to live with current school conditions. The facts show that the school is unwilling or incapable of following city guidelines for noise and light pollution. Therefore, I recommend that prior to any council approval of expansion, that the school cease their evening football games, comply with city codes regarding lighting and noise ordinances, keep their security guard on duty 24/7 to prevent violations from occurring, that the city not allow the approval of the new special event area on the northern side of the church 80 feet from our homes. Council members, what you're being asked to approve tonight is a serious concern. For neighbors of the school, your decision will be permanent and forever is a long, long time. I stand before you not only for myself, but for those Desert Chapel neighbors that will follow me in the years to come. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Followed by Marie Bachnevich. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Good evening. Mr. Mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Chuck Diadocio. I live in Deepwell and I am active in our neighborhood organization. When neighbors complain, I hear about it. When the chapel held a rock concert outdoors, residents were outraged. I was away then, but I heard the noise this October. We went outside with guests for dinner and heard Desert Chapel football fans screaming at the top of their lungs. We had to return indoors to eat and we live a mile away. At the planning meeting, one commissioner said, "There's noise from the White Party. What's the difference?" I'll explain the difference. Like Bikers Weekend and similar events, White Party occurs once every year downtown where noise can be expected. All these events bring in tourist dollars, enhance our city's reputation, and create demand for housing because tourists find an exciting city in desert tranquility. They come back and buy homes. Chapel events are completely opposite. They will occur many times each year and noise will affect residential neighborhoods. They won't attract tourist dollars and more people, as this gentleman pointed out, will want to sell their homes to fewer buyers because of the noise. They produce a negative economic impact. Precedent set here today has broader ramifications. If the chapel can produce disruptive levels of noise with negative consequences, why can't anyone else for any reason? You will have no justification to say otherwise. Neighbors with kids at the chapel support football for their children, as does my neighbor, Ken Husky, whose wife teaches there. I support football for their children, Mike McCollum's children, and all the children at Desert Hospital. Sports are important in childhood development. The city built a skate park for its kids, it must find a park for these kids too. I understand they need an 80-yard field. A Desert Chapel supporter at the planning meeting said they couldn't use Palm Springs High because it is inconvenient to place an 80-yard field inside a 100-yard one. I don't understand why and I think this should be further explored, but inconvenience doesn't equate to the harm to homeowners. Homeowners bought homes in quiet neighborhoods expecting that to continue. They can't move their homes and their homes will sell for less because of the noise. And where can they move? No place is safe from noise if the city establishes this precedent. The solution to this problem is simple. The city must find a location where these kids can play without disrupting us, maybe Demuth Park, which is already set up for other sporting events. The city must explore all alternatives. What about special events? The chapel held a rock concert at Palm Springs High last Easter. They can also rock at the convention center like White Party and others do, so there is no reason to ever hold these events outdoors at the chapel. If you approve their proposal, you will sound the death knell of the legacy of Ruth Hardy who understood people move to the desert because of the quality of life here. Don't abandon that legacy. It has worked well for Palm Springs. I urge you to move slowly and cautiously and examine all alternatives before you make a decision that will have long-lasting impact and implications on the future of all Palm Springs. Thank you for your consideration.
I hope I have that correct.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening and welcome.
Mr. Mayor, city councilpeople, staff, Marie Bachnevich. I am an attorney with Goralnik and Gilliland. We do represent Mesquite Country Club Condominium Homeowners Association. And I want to extend my thanks to staff, particularly Doug Evans and Alex Meyerhoff, for having hosted a series of meetings between the association and Desert Chapel, as well as some Deepwell community representatives, to try and work out some of the concerns that I won't reiterate because previous speakers have articulated them very well. Over the series of meetings, I think we did come to a positive, at least, framework that Mr. Evans handed out. I had been concerned because the conditions of approval that I got yesterday are apparently not what you were handed just here this evening, but based on what Mr. Evans recited, I believe that does accurately reflect what we all agreed to. I say a framework, however, because you have heard tonight that notwithstanding the painful process of extracting these concessions from Desert Chapel, it appears there are still some problems with compliance. We don't have any problem at this point with football on the terms stated in the terms, in the conditions of approval, nor with the special events, as long as they are within the conditions of approval. My problem is, has been, and unfortunately, it looks like it's going to remain, compliance with conditions of approval. The past master plan was not complied with. You have before you conditions that, again, were not necessarily generously or willingly given forward by Desert Chapel, but were extracted through painful and protracted series of meetings and are still not being complied with on some levels. So my client has directed me to consider asking, or to ask the council to consider postponing a decision on this and maybe looking a little bit more at the history, some of these violations that have occurred since planning commission approved this. I'm not sure we're ready at this time to approve this for all time. Notwithstanding that the conditions of approval do permit, obviously, the council to revoke these permits, I'm wondering if perhaps a sunset or a revisiting date might be appropriate. Additionally, and this is just on a separate note, we've had a continual concern with lighting. We appreciate Mr. Evans' efforts to monitor the lighting. We would like to see a possibility that someday this lighting plan be made permanent. We don't know that 20 years from now, we still want to be dealing and horsing around with temporary setups and whatnot, and we'd like to see that perhaps built into this somehow, a look-back date or perhaps some sort of sunset on this, some years in the future. I'm just not sure that this is appropriate for all time for this site. I would be willing to hear from someone from Desert Chapel tonight, if they're willing to address it, how, after we had so many meetings and so much effort, on behalf of my client, Deepwell residents, other community residents, and staff, that we're still having problems with after-hours kids, even with supervision, creating rather large noise problems at this site. We don't have a problem with Desert Chapel doing good things for their kids. We really don't. We don't particularly care what they do with their site, as long as they keep the noise down, supervise the kids in the after-hours, provide some security. And notwithstanding that pretty clear directive in these conditions of approval, it's still not happening. We understand that sometimes things slip by, but it's just a little too often for our comfort level. So we would ask that this be postponed. Perhaps some more meetings are in order? Perhaps council could direct staff to look into it further? Not quite sure what needs to happen, but compliance just isn't happening. And if it's not going to happen after all the effort that we've put into it, I'm not sure what it's going to take. Thank you.
I don't have any more cards. If there's anyone who would like to speak to this item, please come forward at this If there's anyone else, please come down now. Because following these speakers, I will close the public hearing. So if you want to speak, please come forward now. Good evening and welcome. Please give your name to the clerk.
Janie Dremel. Do you need this? Janie Dremel, I'm a resident in Deepwell. I've lived there for 16 years. I have seen absolutely no change in the noise level, other than, like you said, the concert. But as far as the football games, and the concert was addressed, it was, I'm not offended by music, so it didn't bother me in the least, but the football games, I noticed no noise. I hear Palm Springs High School. Times, I talk.
I'm sorry. I forgot.
It's happened before.
I apologize. I didn't reset the clock. That's on me.
It's okay. I'm here on behalf of, you know, the kids, Deepwell. I've lived there, like I said, for 16 years. I have three kids. I've had calls from parties, neighbors, people saying, "It's too loud." One at my house at 8 o'clock at night, my daughter's 16th birthday party. Neighbors across the street saying they got calls, "What do you do to keep..." It's supposed to be a quiet neighborhood, but it's a little unrealistic as well. Kids need to have fun. And at 8 o'clock at night, I've gotten calls, complaints, you know, "It's too loud, music too loud." The lifestyle has changed a whole lot and, like you were saying, desert tranquility and all that. People originally came out here for, to get asthma problems, things like that. Well, things have also changed. Now it's a flourishing vegetation, sprinklers, everything. People have more allergies here than they came out here originally. Things do change. But what hasn't changed is these kids need things to do, okay? Constructive things to do. And on behalf of Deepwell, I have not heard anyone complain about football games, no one. And I've, like I said, I've lived there. I'm out in the area. I'm not inside my house all the time. I'm out with my kids. And I don't hear the complaints at all. So I don't know where this is coming from, but I heard it was going to be up, so I wanted to come before the council and say, "Please reconsider and let them continue." Thanks.
Thank you. Good evening. You'll have five minutes. Please give your name to the clerk.
Thank you. I'm John Bush. How do you do, Mr. Mayor, council members?
Was that Jeb?
John. Cousin Jeb? No. He's still out there. My specific concerns are not about the school and its expansion and growth and what it does for the community. I think that's fantastic. What I'm concerned about is what the community is doing for the school. The staff member who spoke about that street that they were going to offer to have rededicated back to the city, I believe he called that Sunny Dunes. The street sign says Desert Chapel. My implication here is that somebody had the city place that sign up there on that street that is not called Desert Chapel. I thank the two gentlemen who removed themselves from this meeting because of their prejudicial potential in this case. I thank you, Mr. Mayor, for removing the other one in November. They'll be modest. The additional points are that there are things that go on on a constant basis, as just was pointed out, a couple of people before me, that are not attended to, that are not reckoned with. If we can't use the master plan that we have, how can we trust a new master plan? We don't change a master plan for the benefit of those who it governs. We put a master plan in place for everybody, all of the citizens. We don't just keep changing it for special interests. So I ask you to very strongly consider, if you, as a council, vote for this particular action, if you might be voting for more assistance or aid to the chapel than the chapel is giving to Palm Springs. Thank you.
My name is Sean.
Good evening and welcome.
My name is Sean Wood. I actually was born in Palm Springs. I've been here 52 years. Currently a resident of Deepwell on Palomino Road. I, like some of the people before me, have no problem, but in full disclosure, I also sit on the board at Desert Chapel as a volunteer. I also have a business in town where I employ over 100 people. And many of my employees are very much involved with the activities of the church and football games. Many of them are members of the church, as well as some of them have children at the school. And being raised in Palm Springs, I was raised right on Riverside Drive, four houses away from Sunrise where the school is. I've watched the city grow and I've kind of taken ownership in it. And part of that growth, to me, is to have a prosperous, you know, private-type school. And you look at any prosperous city, that's part of the thing, and a church that's prosperous. That church, if anybody goes there, is busy every evening of the week for seniors, for kids, for Bible studies, as well as things like 12-step programs. It's not just for the select few kids. And part of this expansion, these classrooms, will help accommodate a lot of the things we're doing in the evening there for the community, and I think it's a vital part of this community. And I'm proud personally, you know, as being a longtime resident of Palm Springs, to see where our city's going and the fact that we have such a vital church, as well as many of the other activities with the convention centers and what's happening downtown. I think it all incorporates and, you know, to ask for 13 nights a year, I don't think is a big deal, in my opinion. I mean, it's, to me, it just seems not a whole lot to ask, so I just ask you to go ahead and approve it. And I think staff has exhausted this. I don't think there's any reason to postpone it any longer. I think we've come to pretty much agreement. The planning commission was unanimous and there are diverse group of people, so I think that's why you have them there to do some of the homework prior to coming to this point. Thank you.
I'm Mike Lindley and I attend Desert Chapel.
Good evening and welcome.
You know, two points. One, when I was leaving, I went to several of the games, watching the compliance nature of this. You know, we're here as a church, but we're here tonight about time, place, and manner. And it's our responsibility that that time, place, and manner be responsible to the community. We don't lose sight of that. We don't take that lightly in any way. I was there, in fact, I left the game, left the property about 9:40, completely dark. Everyone was gone, all the cars had left. As I turned the corner, the fourth quarter of the Palm Springs High football games was just starting. And as we were sitting in the parking lot, as it was very quiet, everyone was gone, we of course could hear the Palm Springs High football game going on down the street. So it's not a, it's not a unique event that's taking place. I think that there's two provisions that are very important here. One is, as we discussed, and it's the litany of discussions of incidences that people brought up span several years. I've lost count of the number of times back in 2002, when I apologized to people, looked them in the eye for that concert, and said, "We take responsibility. I'm very sorry. That will not happen again." We didn't understand what was going on, but that's our fault and we have to pay attention to that. As we look going forward in what we've tried to do tonight, and I would encourage you to give us some closure tonight and an opportunity to succeed with this endeavor. We've laid out guidelines for time, place, and manner. We've met with community, we met with staff, we met a lot, and came up with guidelines. You have the ability within your approval tonight to revoke those. We have to prove our ability ongoing, not from people saying something happened and it was in the past and it took place, but ongoing and measured. I asked Mr. Marshall if he received any phone calls on the number that we provided the night of the scaling of the wall that I just heard about for the first time, and his phone didn't ring. What I would ask you tonight is to give us an opportunity to be a responsible neighbor. We, I don't think there's anyone in here that will ever be in this room will disagree that it is about the kids. It's about what we offer to them as a community, and that's what builds the community and will keep it going when it's not us standing here but them. Give us the opportunity. Give us the opportunity, please, to show that we can abide by those. And I think what you'll find is a respectful neighbor, a humbled neighbor, and someone who will be responsive to the requirements set forth. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome. Please give your name to the clerk.
Good evening. My name's Mike Connors. I live at 801 South Sunrise Way, across Sunrise from the chapel. I agree with this previous speaker wholeheartedly. It is about the children, and I do think we need to be concerned about the children. As a stepparent who raised an adolescent, one of my rules with that adolescent was that privileges were given based on past performance. If you live within the rules you're having currently, then maybe you get more privileges down the road. If you're pushing the limits you currently have, you don't get the limits put out there further, so you can push them further. I think the community needs to send a message to Desert Chapel and to the children at Desert Chapel that by infracting, making infractions of their current rules, that we don't extend things out further, that they need to live within the current guidelines for a while. Stop the complaints, stop the neighbors from having problems, and come to us in a year after there haven't been complaints, after they're living with their current guidelines, and ask us whether or not they can have extended hours, extended activities in those locations. But to give the children the message that by pushing the limits that they get more privileges would be a wrong message for us to give. One of the ways I see Desert Chapel pushing the limits, not just with the sign that says Desert Chapel, which I don't believe has been deeded as that in the city, not just with the games and that type of thing, but when looking at the plat, when I was looking at the expansion, I believe there's a 40-foot city easement in front of Desert Chapel. That 40-foot easement contains a cross and a sign, which I don't believe should be allowed by the city on city property. It seems to me like it's an organization that's continuing pushing limits. I do receive lights in my bedroom window, which are off and on past 10:00 from the football games and that, have not minded that. The noise has not bothered me, but I do think to give them extended privileges when they can't live within their current restrictions would be a poor message to give. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tim Holmeyer. I live in Deepwell also. We bought our house there about seven years ago. I know Ms. Dremel alluded to the fact of no football noise. Well, one evening during the football season, we were visiting with our neighbor two doors down, who happens to be her sister-in-law. And when we said goodnight to her sister-in-law in front of our house on Maria, which is five blocks away, we could hear the football game. So the noise issue is there, and it is a valid issue. We can go back and forth. There's people here from the chapel who are pro for this resolution and other people who are against it. I think you need to look at alternative solutions and alternative locations. Because the neighborhood that many people bought their homes in was a quiet neighborhood, without special events and without Friday night football games. We have nothing against giving the children the opportunity to play games, and sports are very healthy, but it doesn't need to be done in a residential neighborhood. Rather than waste any more of your time, I want to thank you for all of your patience to listening to all the pros and the cons, and step wisely, and good luck to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome.
Hello, I'm Joan Martin. I live on the other side of Deepwell. So I'm here as a resident of the city. Noise and light pollution should be minimized always in our town, in all towns. We have a special opportunity here in our small town to keep it wonderful, quiet, clean, livable. So if we can minimize it, wonderful. I wonder if Friday night football couldn't become Saturday football during the day, for instance. I don't know what the limitations are of the sports programs, but there's a lot to be said for that. My daughter attended a private school. There was no Friday night football, and she did just fine. So, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. You have five minutes. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Missy Donaldson, and I have lived in Palm Springs for almost 18 years now. Desert Chapel has been my home for a number of years. I am an educator at this school, and I'm also the ASB director. I promote the school spirit. In fact, I'm the one behind the spirit for the kids. I'm all for the kids. I hold the dances. I hold the homecoming and all of the school events. I feel that the kids should have an opportunity, just like any other public school. Just because it's a private school doesn't mean that we shouldn't have the same opportunities. We are a small school, but I anticipate the growth of the school. And I would appreciate your approval on this. And even, and even though the school is growing football, and not just, it's not just about football. It's also church events that take place. But activities, as you know, are a major part of the kids' lives. And I am a major part of those kids' lives. And I'd like to see them grow in character, but also to see them grow as they become young men and women, and as they continue on to their college. I just appreciate the opportunity to speak before you and that you would consider this. And as we grow as a school, that we would continue to grow with more kids and have this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wasn't going to speak on this issue, but I've changed my mind. It is a residential neighborhood, and 10 is a residential neighborhood. And if this school wants to grow, wonderful, move. Move to a non-residential neighborhood, maybe buy property on Ramone or buy property on, what's the one where Staples and Albertsons at Vista Chino? There's a lot of land there where they can grow, and they can have football fields, and they're not going to disturb that many people. But the south end of Palm Springs is a residential neighborhood. And Sunrise, north of Ramone, has been residential. South of Ramone, it's residential. It's condominiums. There are, on the corners, retail, which you need for your residences. But this school is really, is, it's, it's all the Deepwell people, all the Tocques River people, the Truesdale people. It's the people in Mesquite Country Club. I don't know where the people are on El Cielo and Farrell, all those homeowners. Or how about the ones, you know, that are from Ramone up to 111, going over to El Cielo? And it's just, it sounds to me like it's getting out of hand. And I have a couple of questions. Number one, is this school open to all children whose parents pay for it, or do you have to be a member of the church? Can anyone answer that question? It's open to all children?
Yes.
And what has, what has your church done for our community outside of what it's done for your church?
Excuse me. Your public comments are for your public comments, not for question and answer.
Oh, I'm sorry. Then I wanted to know what they've done for the community outside of their church and their members. I'm not aware of anything, and I've lived there 10 years. And then I would like to speak on number 10, on the commercial development. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no one else, then we will...
There's nobody left.
We will close the public hearing. And we will take a break at this time. We'll call the meeting back to order. We've closed the public hearing, and I will open it up to the council for questions, observations.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Plouette.
Several questions, and so I will try to phrase them as well as I can, since there were so many public comments. The first one is a point of clarification. It sounds to me as if there could be as a maximum of seven home football games and not 10, five during the season, and two if they won the championship or participated in the championship. So the document here says 10 football games annually. Second, I just want to confirm what is directly east of the proposed lighted stadium, that it is the maintenance and the golf course? Three, I would like to know how many feet the football field would be to the closest residence? Question number four, is the bank of lights on Sunny Dunes needed? The bank that we talked about up here that is actually not part of the football field? Fifth, do other schools that participate in the league have night football with lights? Six, and this is even a greater issue that we're going to talk about. I have a feeling a little bit more, is the issue of compliance. But is there, is there not currently a security guard on the grounds? Seventh, during the discussions, were opportunities explored to play at Palm Springs High School or other venues? Those are some of my initial questions for staff. Yes, Mr. Mayor, for now, that is all.
I have a list also, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Evans, you're going to respond to those?
Mr. Mayor, several of the questions, my suggestion would be the council consider asking Desert Chapel to answer questions directly from the council. asking Desert Chapel to answer questions directly from the council with regards to a couple of these items. Relative to number of games, you know, the permit was written with 10, so there was some flexibility if they had preseason or things of that nature. The coaches here, the administrators are here. If they could live with seven games, you could either ask them to thumbs up or come to the microphone.
Those representatives from Desert Chapel who might want to respond from the administration, just be available here in the front.
But I'll go through the items, you know, certainly that's an issue of Desert Chapel and then the limit of games that the council is comfortable with. What's directly east, it is the Mesquite Golf Course Maintenance Facility and Golf Course directly east. The feet, the ball field are from the homes, I'll have to measure that and take a look at the exhibits, so maybe while you're getting answers from Desert Chapel, I'll try to do that. I may not have a scale, so I might have to give you an estimate. Lights on Sunny Dunes, the bank of lights, they did have the lights brought in to aid in pedestrian flow in and out, you know, just so it was safer. I think it might be an issue of orientation of the light if it were moved a little on the north sides of, side of Sunny Dunes facing back towards the gymnasium, it probably isn't a problem, but you could ask Desert Chapel that question also. Other schools with, with lights in, in this league, Desert Chapel coach can certainly tell you that. And compliance with the security on guard are onsite. There is correspondence questioning whether or not the guard is there per the requirements, and Desert Chapel should probably answer that. The one I can probably answer, since it's not operational and qualitative question of what they have asked to do, we did talk to Palm Springs High School, in fact, we have Palm Springs High School officials on the planning commission, one of which is actually their facilities director. He is a grounds maintenance expert, has maintained college stadiums that you've watched at the Super Bowl, so he knows what you can and cannot do on a football field. It's an 80-yard game and eight-man football, the width of the field, the length of the field is different, obviously you'd have to either bring in temporary goalposts and the way the fields are set up, it would be difficult at Palm Springs High to make it work. Could it be done if forced? Sure, you could temporarily stripe a field and try to play, but it probably would be a difficult challenge, and obviously they'd have a scheduling issue if they're working at Friday night. We talked about other city facilities, you know, there are other, other places that in theory you could have a football game, you could have it at Palm Springs Stadium, you could have it on a ball field, you know, you could look at alternative locations. Desert Chapel clearly felt that it's a campus environment that they're trying to create, and a typical high school in their minds has an onsite facility, but could it be done elsewhere? It could. We certainly have facilities at the city. If, if the leasing issue or the rental of the facility could be worked out, not in conflict, you could probably have a couple of places in Palm Springs Park facilities that, that could accommodate a football game, particularly an 80-yard field. It doesn't mean it would be easy and real comfortable for everybody, but it, it probably could be done. So, we did look at the other venues and the commission had a discussion on that and really felt that with the number of events, the location of the field, the orientation of lights, and the fact that these aren't the same type of spectator draws that you might have at a, a full-size high school with 1,500 to 2,000 kids, that it was an acceptable temporary inconvenience in the neighborhood. And I think that was really their judgment process as they went through their public hearing. But as, as you ask questions, let me go up and take a look at the exhibits and give you distances.
Okay. Perhaps we could get some of the other questions answered, Mr. Mayor, at this time, while Doug is checking on that?
If you please come forward, yes, Mr. Marshall.
I'm not sure if I remember all your questions, I know one had to do with the lights.
Why don't you go through the questions that you had?
One was the amount of the, how many home football games?
The number of games.
If there's 10 games in the season.
I believe that we had six home games this year, I think last year we had seven or eight is the number. We, we put, we asked for 10 because we didn't want to be coming back to you, you know, if for some reason we were able to schedule another game and then we made it to the finals and the flips of the coins all worked out and we end up with 10, and then we've, we've already done our eight or nine and we got to come back to do 10. We figured 10 was an outside number, and as I say, it's been, it's been six or seven in the last couple of years, so we've, you know, we've been fortunate to, to do that. So, we put 10 as kind of an outside number, felt safe with that and we wouldn't have to be back here doing this, doing this again with you.
Do other schools in the league play at night?
So, far as I'm aware, everybody plays at night.
But Desert Chapel is the only school that does, does not have the home evening football games.
We're the only school that does not have homes?
Yeah, football in the evening with lights.
Well, we, we have been having them at night, so.
But I mean, the other schools that you, when you go to your away games, are they played at 7 o'clock on a Friday night?
Some of the schools that we go to do play at night, some of them do not. The ones that do not, I would say are in climates that are more favorable to being able to do that, i.e. they are not 120 degrees outside, so.
So, where, where does, where do you travel for your football games?
We travel...
Oh, okay, so outside the valley?
Outside the valley, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, over San Bernardino, direction to Mecula and San Diego and Ventura, Calabasas, we travel, yeah.
The bank of lights that are not part of the football field, is that a necessary bank of lights?
Well, there is no bank of lights there that I'm aware of, but we, we rent 10 light towers for the games, five on the west side of the field facing east, five on the east side facing west. So, I'm unclear about what light may be being mentioned that would be in Sunny Dunes at a football game.
Well, we indicated there was one during the presentation, that's why the question was asked.
Yes, I'm aware that one was mentioned, but I, I've been to every single game and there's been no, there's been no light in that street on a game night. Now, there has been a light there, and there was a light in that, on that location on the Harvest Festival night, but not on any game nights. And, and so whether we need to revisit how to do the Harvest Festival and to do the lights for that, but we have 10 lights that are on that, that, on that lighting diagram there, we don't have one in the street on Sunny Dunes.
And could you comment on the security guard?
We have two security guards that we pay to be there till 11 o'clock at night, so while I can't vouch personally for their being there till 11, I can vouch for their personally being there till 10, when every car was cleared out of the parking lot and everybody was gone, and my guards were still there on duty at that time. So, I, I'm unaware again of anything being amiss with regard to that, and again, my cell number's been given to the, to the board members over there so that if we have problems, we have a system in place to address those problems and work out solutions.
Thank you.
Ask you if there's any of your questions with Ms. Folk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. First of all, I want to say that this to me is not an issue about the kids, because I think one of the things that's really important in Palm Springs, and I think is a real problem in Palm Springs, is that we do not have activities for the kids. And this is a land use issue for me, because I don't see anything on the, the games or the activities or any of that, that, that could not be held somewhere else. So, this, I am, I'm, I am addressing this as a land use issue, and, and just to go back for a second to the things for children and for young people, I mean, even at our street fair, we don't have anything. I've long been an advocate of, of having some, one of the side streets closed off for some sort of a dance or, or something like that, because our young people don't have anything to do. So, I would be strongly in favor of, of supporting anything that, that the Desert Chapel wanted to do in the way of sports activities. I just have some questions about whether this land use is, is, is proper. I have a question about the generators. How many generators does it take to run those lights and what's the sound of those generators?
I think each, each light has its own generator, they're relatively small package units. I don't know the sound level, we took a look at them, I've been out there listening to them, I, I couldn't tell you that the distance away from the generators, you could really distinguish the generator noise from the activity level of people, but we could certainly measure it and get the manufacturer specifications for the council if you'd like to know exactly what it is. The nearest resident, if I could just answer a question that could be related to noise also, it appears the nearest condominium, just looking at that without a scale and doing some double-checking, it's in excess of 200 feet and could be approximately 300 feet, and without doing a double-check, I'm not going to tell you precisely how far it is, but it's, it's almost the length of a football field as I measure it off that diagram.
All right, and thank you. There also, I also have a question about the, the traffic sign. I mean, so many people have asked about that traffic sign, is that Sunny Dunes, is that Desert Chapel Way, is what, why is the, why does it say Desert Chapel on the street sign, and is that still Sunny Dunes? I have a lot of confusion about that.
Councilwoman, there's a very specific answer for that, and I would ask David Bracken, our traffic engineer, to address that issue. With particularities, please, David, thank you.
Thank you, yes. When council vacated Sunny Dunes to the east, that ceased to become Sunny Dunes. So, if you look at the traffic signal that was put there, it says Sunny Dunes to the west, which it is, and it says Desert Chapel to the east, which identifies what's there. It's, it's no different than if you go down Highway 111 down Valley, the traffic signals that are at shopping centers and stuff identify those centers if there's not a street there, and in fact, that's not Sunny Dunes anymore, and that's why we did that.
David, would you also note that their ability and right to do that based on their participation in the financial cost of that?
Yeah, just, the signal was, was put there based on a traffic study done by Desert Chapel as part of their expansion. As part of that, the council conditioned that expansion to pay their proportionate share of that signal, which they did, and they also paid for the design of the signal.
On that question, how many other signs like that do we have in the city?
Well, I'm not sure exactly how many we have. That's, I know we don't have any that say Desert Chapel, do we have any that say shopping center?
Well, there's only one, Desert Chapel.
That's true. Well, I can't think of any, I don't know that we don't have any that, that identify that, but I...
I also would like you to address the issue that one of the gentlemen brought up about the 40-foot easement.
I'm looking at the site diagram, it appears there's a 50-foot right-of-way along this portion of Sunrise. If that's the case, it's just behind the sidewalk, and I believe the area that has the identification for the church is outside of the right-of-way. Both Dave Bracken and I, I guarantee you tomorrow morning, will be double-checking to make sure that there's not an anomaly, but my recollection is that was an easement that was there at one point, it's no longer there. And, you know, that property was given back to Desert Chapel from where it had come, but we'll double-check that in the morning, we don't have the right-of-way maps here. Looking at the conditions of approval, you know, there was no indication of, of a right-of-way width, of that, that width. And a standard right-of-way on Sunrise Way in this location is a 100-foot right-of-way. Dave Bracken might recall the, the right-of-way conditions specifically, but I think it's a 50-foot right-of-way, and I don't think we have that material in the, in the public right-of-way. If we do, we'll talk to Desert Chapel about it.
Okay, and then my other issue, of course, is, is the meetings that are currently taking place to revise the master plan, and I get really concerned with some of the issues that we're dealing with constantly changing before the master plan can be revised. And so, I have a real serious issue about precedent-setting with changing this land usage. I also have a real difficult time with, with changing so much the fabric of the neighborhood. I mean, one of the things that, that was real important that we talked about so much in, in during the elections was people moved into the city to move into specific neighborhoods, neighborhoods they liked, whether they, they moved into the tennis club area because of its historic feeling and because of the lack of sidewalks, and people moved into other areas, people moved close to downtown because they wanted the convenience of downtown, knowing that they would have also with that convenience of downtown, the noise of downtown. I am very concerned about the comments made by the Mesquite Country Club attorney about the noise and about the various things that have not been complied with, and also just what is happening to, to the fabric of that neighborhood and what people expected when they moved into that area. I also am concerned about what happens when you make changes to land usage, especially in light of what we're doing in our meetings with the master plan. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, first of all, when I first came to Palm Springs, a friend of mine, Ted Regans, told me he wanted to take me to church. And the first church that I ever attended when I came to this community was Desert Chapel. And over the years, I've heard lots of things about Desert Chapel. And I'm going to say some of those things tonight, because I think the members of Desert Chapel, they need to hear them, and perhaps you've already heard them. But I asked a question about the sign, because when I became a council member, one of the first things that people talked about was the bias of the council, because we had three members from city council who attended the church. Now, that's a fact. And as a matter of fact, up until this council, there's always been at least three members on the council that I've served on who attended Desert Chapel. And for me personally, that's not a problem. But for the people in the community watching saw certain things where there appeared to be a bias, i.e. the sign. Now, it's just a sign, but I can't tell you how many churches that contacted me to say, "Well, how come we can't get a sign like that?" It's the perception of how you are perceived in the broad-based community. So, I listened to the community, I'm, I heard issues about the lights, the noise, football, but those aren't the real issues. It's like those are symptoms, but it's not the real disease. What I'm really hearing is that there are members of the community saying that there's no trust between two neighbors, and that's most unfortunate, especially when a neighbor is a church. Now, I'm not saying that that's warranted, but it exists. It exists, obviously, by the testimony that you heard tonight. And I don't think as a council, historically, we have done a lot to address that perception or misperception. We just kind of accepted it and no one ever said anything about it. Well, I don't think it's been true, but if I don't say anything about it, then the perception persists. So, I think, based upon what I heard here tonight... So I think, based upon what I heard here tonight, it appears that people really aren't opposed to the football. They're not opposed to the lights if they can be straightened out. And based upon this document that the attorney, Ms. Bakhnovich, presented, that it appears that you'd come to some consensus. Is that, am I correct on that? And yet, even with that consensus, there are people who are saying, "Yeah, but they're not going to do it." Yet I heard members from the church saying, "Yes, we are going to do that." So now we're faced with the dilemma of saying, "Who do we trust?" I think that's an issue between the two of you that can be worked out. This issue has come before us, and I think this is an issue that's really workable between the church and the community. Because everyone seems, I mean, you've already presented us, you know, documents that where you're in agreement if this is followed. I think perhaps what we need to look at are some ways of making sure that they're complied with, and perhaps a review process. And I think if we can do those things, then I think we're all right. So I would recommend that the leadership, whatever was the composition of that group, if they would meet, come back with some compliance schedule or performance marks that you think are important so that this process can be facilitated. I'm certainly not anti-church. I think that the work that you're doing is commendable. I think the work that you're doing for young people is commendable. I've done it myself, different parts of the country. But I think we have an issue here between the church and the neighbors, and I believe that it can be resolved. So I just recommend that you go back to the table, see what kind of issues you can draw up for us in terms of compliance where the trust factor is established, and we can move forward. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that motion.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second?
Yeah, if I could just get some clarification on what the real intent is. Are you continuing this hearing to a date certain?
Yes.
So you're contemplating that we'd give it either two weeks or a month, and that they would come back with a report to this body?
A month? Okay.
We've tried to schedule meetings with the group in two weeks, and it just doesn't work. We need a week to schedule, to get everybody noticed, and then we have to have the meeting and be able to report back to you. So we need 30 days. Sounds good to me.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, folks.
I would also suggest that this not only involve the Mesquite Country Club people, but that the Deepwell Association has a very active board.
All the groups, and you worked with those groups previously, am I correct?
Yes. I will make sure that all the interested stakeholders are involved.
That sounds good.
And if I could further ask, is it your intent, when this comes back in a month, to take more public testimony? So are you going to continue the public hearing so there could be more testimony? Or do you want to not take testimony at that time and just have the item continued without the public hearing?
I think we have heard the testimony, and we're responding to the testimony.
Mr. Mayor, I would really like to take public testimony because I think we heard two, you know, it's like people live in a different, two different worlds there tonight from the public testimony. One person on one side of the street says they heard nothing.
We can reschedule hearings, that's not a problem.
Okay, well, then I would suggest the motion is to continue, to reopen the public hearing, continue it for a month, which is what date?
February 18th.
To the February 18th meeting, and that the parties be directed to try and go through a meet-and-confer process to see if they can reach agreement on resolving these issues and providing a monitoring program.
What we want to do, we haven't opened the hearing for number 10, but I tend to think it may be very similar. You want to just go through it as well?
Well, I think you should deal with this item, and then come to that item and...
All right, that is fine.
Ms. Joshare, is it possible during the public hearing that we allow a limited public testimony? For instance, if we ask that they pick one or two people from Deepwell to present?
No, if we're going to have it, we have it.
Well, it is, it would be possible if the council, at the beginning of the hearing, wants to establish some ground rules. And if, for example, tonight, what you're suggesting is that you would like, basically, when it comes back, a report on how the discussion went and representatives of both sides, and I think you could, if you wanted to try and limit the testimony, you could try and establish that rule. Now, people may react in a way that cause you to determine whether that's a good idea or not, but it would be possible to do that as long as the rules are fair and treat both sides equally.
I think if we're going to have the hearing, that everyone should have the opportunity to speak. Certainly, if they want to present themselves, a group that will represent them, that's fine, but I don't think, not from here, if they come, let them speak. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, so we understand the council's direction as to who we have our actual meeting with. If the council wants us to have a general community meeting, we can. What we have been doing on this one, we have been bringing in the representatives from groups. Mesquite Country Club typically comes with their attorney and representative from the board, or representatives. I need directions so I know how to notice the meeting that we're going to have to discuss the conditions. If it's a general neighborhood meeting with the neighborhoods involved, it could be very big. It could be very broad, and we might, we'll be in this room, which is very difficult to negotiate conditions of approval.
I understand the dilemma. Perhaps if they had a meeting among themselves and sent designated representatives rather than doing the very large thing, that might facilitate the process.
And the meeting will be open to the public. We'd like, you know, it's worked really well if we go to the conference room and have people at the table, so we can work that way. If that's the council's pleasure, we'll certainly do that, but it will be open to the public, and anybody can come.
Mr. Mayor, I have another question.
Yes, Ms. Fol.
Could we also have a staff report on my concern about the precedent-setting part of this? This would, by allowing this to happen, do we then open up to other areas of the city and other groups in the city being able to request this and using this as a precedent?
I mean, the short answer to that, without a lot of research, is anything you do, people in similar circumstances should be treated the same way. So to the extent you have a similar circumstance, people should always be, expect to be treated in a similar way to people who were treated before that. So it's a precedent to something, but it would involve similar circumstances.
Okay. All right, and you have direction?
If the motion passes, we do.
Okay, then. Roll call.
Mr. Oden, I had it moved, but I don't recall the second. I'm sorry. Thank you. I just didn't hear it. Ms. Fol.
Yes.
Mr. Pugnay.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor.
Aye. And it passes unanimously, and will come back on February 18th. And thank you, everyone, for your testimony tonight. We appreciate your concern. And we will move to item number 10.
Is that item number 10?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an issue with a planned development district and a tentative tract map. And again, I would ask Mr. Evans, our director of planning and zoning, to give a staff report on this public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to make a comment that, from the discussion that we had earlier, that my only connection with Desert Chapel is my children attend the school, and I don't think this item 10 relates to the school in any manner. So I don't believe I have any appearance of a conflict. So I'll be staying for this one.
Welcome back.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is also an application by Desert Chapel to subdivide a 3.22 acre site into eight single-family residential lots and three professional office lots located on the northwest corner of Sunrise Way and Sunny Dunes. The property is zoned R1C, which is single-family residential, and has a similar general plan designation. What I'd like to do is first start with the city's general plan and how we deal with this type of property, first focusing in on Sunrise Way. The city's general plan, as well as the zoning ordinance, allow for professional office uses in residential zones, provided those residential zones and properties front on a major thoroughfare. Sunrise Way is a major thoroughfare, and in this case, the applicant, by discretionary permit, conditional use permit, or planned development district, can apply for professional office uses. Discretionary permit for the council is one that you exercise judgment, care, and consideration in making your decision, and you do not have to approve the project, but the applicant has the right to apply for it. Throughout the city, we have a number of office buildings on major thoroughfares. We've got a number of professional offices on Tocqueens, which is zoned R2, medium-density residential, where you can't have an office building. So we have areas in town that this type of land use is on major thoroughfares. And the reason our general plan and zoning says that is we know we have some lots that are very narrow, would be very difficult to develop for residential purposes, and that type of description fits this property very well. It's a very narrow lot, fronts on the major thoroughfare. As you go westbound on Sunny Dunes, the project then turns to a single-family residential subdivision. The Planning Commission reviewed and considered the proposal for eight single-family lots, and the Planning Commission, after listening to public input from the neighborhood, eliminated one lot and asked that the applicant have only seven lots so that the lot sizes and configuration would be very close to the type of size of lot located immediately to the south. I'll show you the exhibit relative to the new lots, but it's very comparable to 10,000 square foot lots located to the south. At the Planning Commission public hearing, the commission took testimony from the public. They heard that the lot sizes needed to be larger so they'd be compatible with the neighborhood, and the commission responded to that with eliminating one lot. The type and location of driveways on Sunny Dunes was discussed, both for the office as well as the residential. And then the light and glare from headlights at the office building when they exit. Subsequent to the Planning Commission meeting, Desert Chapel representatives did meet with the most directly affected homeowner that's directly opposite of the driveway. I have not received an update on that meeting. We might get an update during the public hearing. You have a written staff report. It's a fairly straightforward development project that was submitted a number of years ago. It was processed fairly far through the process, through the Planning Commission, and then the applicant withdrew the project and did not proceed with it. That lot project had nine lots instead of seven, so over time, they've reduced the number of lots that are before you today. But with that, I'll show you the plans. The proposal that the Planning Commission looked at originally is this drawing here. Sunrise Way is located here, Sunny Dunes in this location. You can see the existing lot configuration on the south side of Sunny Dunes. The proposed lots in this case were substandard. They were close to meeting standards, but they were substandard, didn't meet the criteria of the R1C zone, which is a 10,000 square foot lot, roughly 100 by 100. The revised exhibit, based upon the Planning Commission recommendation, is shown here as far as the seven lots and the lot configuration, the lot width on the interior lots. On the interior lots is 93 feet and a few inches, so it's still a little bit substandard of 100 feet, but very close to meeting the standard. The corner lot is 100 feet. So as you take a look at how these lots start matching up, they start matching up with the rhythm pretty much down the street. Obviously, the rhythm gets off as you get closer because of the different lot dimensions. The commercial or professional side of it, and I want to make it clear, it has to be professional office. It cannot be a commercial land use, so you can't have retail and things of that nature. The idea was to have one driveway off of Sunrise. The existing Ramon Mobile Home Park property is here, the Bristow Channel, and then the plaza at Sunrise, commercial development to the north. Ramon Trailer Park sets back into this area. Most of this property is undeveloped. So when you take a look at the project, the professional office is a very narrow strip of land. The lot sizes there are a little over 20,000 square feet, up to 35,000 square feet, so half acre to a little bit larger than that. The office building sizes are intended to be 6,450 square feet, 3,150 square feet, and 3,000 square feet, with the largest building being on the corner. Zoning ordinance prohibits individual advertising on the building for individual businesses. When you have a complex like this, the sign ordinance basically says you can have one complex identification sign, so you would typically have a monument sign and not a series of signs that would be facing the homeowners. The public hearing did have the concern about this particular driveway in this location. And let me double-check something. It was in this location here, and it's coming in on a midpoint on a property line, and the planning, or the applicant was going to meet with the property owner, it's either this house or this house, to talk to them about the driveway. Land use-wise, professional office typically a Monday through Friday, daytime operation, little activity at night, very little activity at the weekend, probably pretty quiet neighbor overall, although it does generate some additional traffic. The alternative land use, which could be residential, obviously, is a 24/7 type land use that would operate every day of the year if you had residential here, and really, the depth of the lots would make it very difficult to do residential. That's an overview of the Planning Commission recommendation. They did recommend approval of this, and the revised plan is on the far right. That complies with the recommendations of the Planning Commission. That completes our report at this time.
Are there any questions of the staff report before we open the public hearing? Ms. Fol.
Mr. Evans, could you just go over again for me what kinds of businesses could be in that commercial area?
It would be limited to professional office uses, so you could have accountants. You could have standard business offices. You could have medical, if they meet the parking requirement when they actually do the project. And then there's some very limited accessory-type uses that can go into that zone. But it's, you know, this is typically a professional office zone is a pretty quiet land use. You cannot go in with commercial retail-type land uses. You could not have that type of activity at this site. It's my understanding, although it's not a condition of approval, that Desert Chapel is likely to use most of the buildings, if not all of the buildings, for administrative and other types of activities. But there's nothing in the conditions that would require them to retain ownership and operate the facility.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions before we open the public hearing? Then at this time, we will open the public hearing. And... and the first person that I have is Charlene LeBeau. If you please come forward, you'll have five minutes, give your name to the--
Okay. My name is Charlene LeBeau. I own LeBeau &amp; Associates Executive Search. I represent nationally land use entitlements, land developers, home builders, commercial, and investment real estate companies. I believe with Ms-- I agree with Ms. Folt 100%. This is a land use issue, and that land is residential. And I have never heard of residential being turned into commercial. And from Ramon to 111, there is no commercial, except for those two, the two, the two, excuse me, churches and the school now. And on the other side, now they're building professional office buildings. Okay, I just got on this yesterday, and I did speak with Doug today, and he did tell me that they're planning to use this for their offices. Well, on the earlier one, on Issue 9, I saw they're building a new administration building at 6:30 Sunrise. So they're building three offices here, and they're going around the corner. Okay, let them have the offices on Sunrise, that's fine. Those offices aren't going to hurt anything, but around the corner should not be the parking lot on a residential street, Sunny Dunes. And what they should do is give up one of those buildings and make a parking lot in between the two office buildings. That would be the appropriate way to do that, and that would be whoever would advise them. I also understand each of us homeowners' associations need to get attorneys. Okay, so let me finish what I was going to say. Okay, so one professional building, two medical office buildings, is what the proposal says, a parking lot, and development and sales, seven to nine residential lots. I myself personally looked at that residential property to buy before they bought it, and there were five lots there then. I was going to build a single-family house on it. Okay, so they have seven to nine residential lots or completed homes and/or condos on Sunny Dunes at considerable profit and long-term lease income on land zoned by the city of Palm Springs as residential in the general plan. Due to the inconvenience of their personnel and tenants, they want to have their parking lot egress be on Sunny Dunes, creating yet more traffic, accidents, speeding, and injury and/or death by accidents to children crossing daily to and from schools, including their own. If this proposed commercial-for-profit development is to be allowed, there should be no question that the parking lot egress in and out be allowed only on Sunrise, where the church has recently petitioned for a streetlight. Per the city's engineering department, this would create another 650 or something cars on Sunny Dunes daily, which is strictly a residential neighborhood until you get down to where builder's supply is on the other side, which is same issue on San Lorenzo. We've got hotels, motels towards Palm Canyon. So the last 200 feet east of Palm Canyon Drive has gotten kind of commercial. But off Sunrise, it is strictly residential, and it's residential from Ramon on up, and it's residential from Ramon north, and mostly condominiums. The only place that's commercial is on major street corners. You know, the library is on Beristo. I mean, they can put the office building there, but they've got to go down to two, put the parking lot in between, and take those nine lots they've got now, plus the parking lot, and that should go back to the five lots, or maybe it was six. Maybe I'm not totally accurate. And you can't put condom-- you can't even make that a residential for multifamily, because our sewers and everything are not set up for more people on these streets. Our whole water line was set up for weekend homes, actually, and we're getting too many plumbing, electrical, all the utilities, cable, all the cable, all the telephone, it's just not built to handle multifamily. It's barely built to handle single family, because many single families have their offices in their homes now. There's a lot of home business now. As you know, people, people are moving here left and right, and they're bringing their businesses with them. Good, we need the income in the city of Palm Springs, and I think we do need to keep this. And I also didn't know there's going to be a 6,500-square-foot property on that little skinny lot. That's kind of big, isn't it? That's a big, pretty big office building. Are they going to be limited to one story? We don't know? Okay.
It says one story.
Okay. Well, things seem to change with these plans, and they get amendments. Anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
And thank you. We do not respond to public comments during in-a-question answer, but we will refer you to staff for any questions. Our next person is Marvin Roos. Good evening, welcome. You know the drill.
Yes, Mayor and Council, Marvin Roos with Monero Smith &amp; Associates. We represent Desert Chapel as the engineers and planners for the project. We're here to concur in the Planning Commission recommendation, including the changed conditions from engineering on the widening of Sunrise. I'd point out that the allowance for these types of professional office buildings really started with Takwitz, the buildings next to the Palm Springs Mall and the series where the radio stations are, Dr. Mazahar's office, et cetera. Those were all residential properties. They just became, as multifamily, very difficult on, you know, maybe 110, 120-foot-deep lots to actually get the types of parking facilities, open space facilities, setbacks, et cetera, adjusted to those properties. I think it's been very successful. I don't see people behind-- in fact, we had some of those same types of hearings on the Takwitz properties when they came, you know, that's going to be noisy, et cetera. But again, as you go down, look at the weekends, look in the evenings, there's actually virtually no, no traffic on those at all. If those are multifamily, they would in fact have, have traffic, not necessarily 24/7, although there would be some, but, you know, the office buildings are going to be pretty much vacated by 6 o'clock at night. There's not a lot coming and going from there. Certainly, as a, as a site planner and working with folks like Dave Barack and Marcus Fuller, the idea of putting more driveways onto Sunrise is not where they would like the traffic to be. This is, this was done after certainly a lot of discussion with, with the planning and engineering departments on how's the best way to take, in a sense, a leftover piece of property. This is originally part of the expansion plans for the Ramon Trailer Park, which in the early '50s was given an award as the best trailer park in the country. And it was going to be their expansion area, and ultimately, the zoning and everything changed to the point where we have the single-family strip and then the mobile home strip along Sunrise. So certainly, we would not want to see, I don't think, an expansion of the Mobile Home Park at this point. The single-family is great, you know, the resurgence of Sunny Dunes and, and those areas was something we hoped for 20 years ago, and we're starting to see that now. We're happy to see that resurgence. I'd point out that the infrastructure of the city, the sewers, the water, is, is designed for the general plan. This would actually probably be within or slightly under the demand issues of water and sewer as it's now proposed, so I wouldn't worry about those issues. We knew, now, obviously, have the traffic signal at the corner to slow folks down, make that, you know, people will adjust to that. I think there's been a little bit of, the newness of, of the signal is always something that changes people's perceptions, and they now remember they have to stop there when the light's red, as opposed to the times past when we all drove through it. So we're adjusting to that. I think that the, that this is a good plan for this site. I think it finishes it off. You know, we'll get landscaping, et cetera. I do not think that putting all of the traffic back onto Sunrise is something that the traffic engineer would, would suggest would be the best way to do it. Again, I think that the, this is not a 24/7 operation. I think we'll do, this will be a good complement to the neighborhood. I understand that, that the architect, Chris Mills, met with the folks across the street and said they'd be glad to continue to work with them. There's, I don't believe there was anything specific that was agreed to at that point, but that, again, I think that the, the headlight issue, I think, is a little, a little moot, because I don't think it's that type of traffic. There'd be a little bit around dinnertime, would be about what you have this time of year, but during the, most of the, most of the year, there'd be very little traffic in and out of that. Anyway, we think this is a project that'll, to complement the neighborhood, certainly finish the site off nicely, and if you have any questions on those types of issues that I can try to answer, I'll, I'm glad to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. And Robert Azucha. Good evening, welcome.
His honor, council, staff, and neighbors. Good evening. My name is Robert Azuka. I'm a resident of the Takwitz River Estates neighborhood. My residence is located at 1471 East San Lucas. I address you as a voice of our neighborhood with the request that you postpone your vote on the plethora of issues on the agenda regarding the Desert Chapel Plan Development District and residential variances for a reasonable 30- to 60-day period. Our neighborhood has been enjoying a renaissance of revitalization, expansion, and renovation. To date, this process has moved forward with relative respect for and in harmony with the architectural vernacular and character of our neighborhood. We have reached a milestone with the proposed Desert Chapel Plan Development. A neighborhood consensus of the major concerns and objections are as follows. Number one, the variance to convert 53% of the total land to P, Zone Professional Services designation, to include the three professional buildings, two medically designated, and three parking lots with 78 vehicle spaces. The resulting impact of the variance in proposed development will diminish the current residential character of the neighborhood and, in fact, is completely at odds with the neighborhood as clearly outlined in the city of Palm Springs' general plan, as well as the clear neighborhood consensus for development. Number two, the proposed placement of one of the two vehicle entry exits for the business portion of this development directly on the residential area of Sunny Dunes, 200 feet west of the existing traffic signal at Sunrise Way. The result of this placement will be the routing of increased vehicle traffic onto a residential street estimated by the city engineering department to be roughly 661 trips per day. Increased vehicle noise, increased vehicle exhaust, diminished safety, particularly for the schoolchildren, trash dumpster activity, and the mentioned headlight infringement directly into adjacent homes, and the diminishing of the traffic calming measures on Sunny Dunes recently affected with the city council members and the engineering department. Three, the proposed increased density by reduction in lot size and the location of seven L4 residential lots along 658 feet of Sunny Dunes Road east of Cali Amigos. The reduced lot size is out of scale with the existing neighborhood and once again at odds with the guidelines of the general plan and the neighborhood consensus for development. Number four, the lack of green or other buffer space between the commercial and residential components of the proposed development and the lack of any community component within the proposed development. Number five, the surprising lack of sensitivity by the developer, a neighborhood and community church, to the clear consensus of neighborhood concerns and objections to this proposed development and residential variance within our shared home neighborhood. That same insensitivity at best, or indifference at worst, is reflected by the lack of response to neighborhood consensus by the director of and the Department of Planning and Zoning on this proposal, as well as the shape and direction of other current neighborhood development, which deviates from the general plan and the neighborhood consensus on standards. We request this 30, preferably 60-day, seeing what the timeframe is for getting people in meetings here, postponement to allow for a reasonable time for the neighborhood to compile and effectively present to the developer and city council constructive proposals and solutions addressing the consensus of neighborhood concerns and objections to this proposed Desert Chapel development. This time will allow the community at large to accomplish compromise and solution in determining what we, as a neighborhood and community, will have to live with or without, as the case may be. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Deal, followed by Steve Rossell. Good evening and welcome.
Why we all?
This is a first for me. Mr. Mayor and members of Palm Springs City Council, my name is Michael Deal, and I reside at 1355 Sunny Dunes Road. When I bought this house six years ago, it was derelict and in foreclosure, and hopefully has increased in value. I am here this evening to express my concern over the proposal made by Mr. Chris Mills on behalf of the Desert Chapel, and rubber stamped, in my opinion, by the Planning Commission. Their request to change the zoning along Sunny Dunes Road to smaller lot sizes less than 10,000 square feet is not keeping with the general plan of Palm Springs. Their request to change the RMHP zoning on Sunrise Way to P is also not in keeping with the general plan. The staff recommendations are just as flawed. I don't want a parking lot on Sunny Dunes Road, and this proposal does just that. The north side of Sunny Dunes should mirror the south side. I am concerned that the new traffic signal at Sunny Dunes and Sunrise Way, which benefits Desert Chapel traffic, is now the lame excuse for not have, for having the parking lot on Sunny Dunes. What are the sizes of these proposed buildings? I now have seen them for the first time, and I don't think a 6,500-square-foot building on the corner of my street is appropriate. The buildings need to fit the lot sizes that are zoned RMHP and accommodate the parking within the confines of these lots, one space for 200 square feet of professional building and one space for 150 square feet of medical. Staff recommendations of a 25-foot setback is, excuse me, of 25-foot setback to the first parking space is part of the problem. The setback at the shopping center north of the property is, is 10 feet, and it should be the same, allowing for parking to be on the property and not on Sunny Dunes. The concern over one driveway on Sunrise as, quote, "making the project more intense and pushing people into making left turns" is dangerous, can be corrected by right-turn-only signs. As a matter only, as, as right turns at Blockbuster Video exiting onto Ramon, and right turn only at Seder Brothers Center at Vista Chino, and many of the right turn-only intersections around Palm Springs. There's a proposed median north to the Ramon Mobile Park entrance. Doesn't this stop cars from making left turns on Sunrise Way and exiting the, exiting the professional center? All this needs to be scaled back. The property is zoned residential and should remain, so I have, I have seen four and $500,000 townhomes shoved on smaller properties, a LaHo in Indian Canyon, and Pentara on East Palm Canyon are two examples. I beg you to send this back to the drawing board, tabling this proposal as all the facts, designs, dimensions, and tenants are known. I'm just tired of business as usual with these kinds of projects being ramrodded through by, through by so few that affects so many. Desert Chapel must recognize that they are the ones surrounded by residential neighborhoods. I want the attack on my neighborhood to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Rossell.
My name is Steve Rossell. I live at 1425 East Sunny Dunes Road, which is directly across from the end lot across at, yeah, Amigo, sorry, it's late. Robert and Michael both covered a lot of the issues that I had. My partner and I also sent you packages of information, each of you, so you should have received that regarding our concerns. I'll just go over a few of them again briefly. We attended the Planning Commission meeting on December 17 regarding this project, and we were concerned about changing the residential zoning to the P zone for professional office buildings. As Robert said, that zoning covers 53% of the site by our calculations. We also heard, or I read in the staff review, the residential uses on major thoroughfares are less than desirable. To the people who live on Sunrise Way, I hope they don't hear that. As far as the traffic goes, we worked with the residents of Mesquite and the city council members and engineering department about two years ago on traffic calming for Mesquite and for Sunny Dunes. We were able to get a bike lane and parking lane and two stop signs on Sunny Dunes Road and got the speed limit reduced from 40 miles an hour to 35 miles an hour. Since the traffic signal has gone in, we have noticed that there is increased traffic, there is increased truck traffic, and the traffic is going much faster. As far as, as just in general, the neighborhood, Takwitz River Estates, you've heard this already, and the Warm Sands neighborhoods, you all know, are very desirable neighborhoods. Dunes Court is just across the street from this proposed development. The last property that sold in Dunes Court sold for over $550,000. dollars, so our neighborhood is valuable. And if you were to look around town, I'm sure you all know, there's plenty of vacant office space available. We need to fill that space. There's not a lot of residential property available, and if you talk to any real estate agents, I'm sure they'd tell you they're hungry. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Intrafartolo, followed by Sherri Sale. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Peter Intrafartolo, and I live at fourteen twenty-five East Sunny Dunes Road, directly opposite the property in question. And before stating my concerns, I'd like to bring up one bit of information. We've already brought this up at the Planning Department, but there's a lack of communication going on on these issues of variances. We've lived at our property for almost six years now and have never once received notice of these meetings or received notice of any of these Planning Commission meetings concerning variances for the property in the area, and there've been a number of them. Same thing with the number-nine proposal. We never got notice of that, and we live in the neighborhood. So it would be nice if the neighbors that I know who have also not received any notices, we could remedy this problem so people could get involved, and that was my understanding from the recent elections, neighborhood involvement, to improve the process for the city. So I'd like to have someone look into that and try and fix the process so that the neighbors do know what's going on. There are three main issues, and I think you've heard them already. The first one is the residential impact of the proposal, especially for the whole neighborhood, since Takwitz River Estates is now organizing as a neighborhood. The neighborhood has come back strong in the last six years since we've owned our property. It's entirely residential, and the land in question is presently all designated residential under the general plan. To remove over fifty percent of the land in this proposal from residential to business and squeeze seven residential lots in the remaining land is not in keeping with the village atmosphere and the residential character that we bought into when we moved here. And it doesn't fit into the general plan's call for a maximum of twenty-four residential units for this entire property. The second issue is a general concern that blowing holes in the general plan, as evidenced with this proposal, will set precedence for further change in the area. There is presently residential zoned property for sale on Sunrise Way, right adjacent to the church. Or even more seriously, will allow present housing to be bought, ripped down, and used for business purposes as a parking lot in the future, and that's a serious concern for us. The third main issue is traffic impact. As Steve already mentioned, for the past two years, the residents have been working with City Council members at meetings and with the Engineering Department to calm traffic on Sunny Dunes, slow it down because of the children and because of the number of accidents that occurred there where parked cars were totaled on a regular basis. The Engineering Department, in the review of these three professional buildings, states six-hundred-and-sixty-one additional daily vehicle trips will result, with only one port on Sunrise and one port on Sunny Dunes. It's not unreasonable to believe that the major share of this traffic is going to empty into our neighborhood. Mr. Evans and Mr. Mills assured us at the December seventeenth Planning Commission meeting that this number would be far less than the number of trips experienced if the neighborhood went to the maximum twenty-four residential units called for in the general plan. Well, if twenty-four residential units in the neighborhood were built, they would have to have over twenty-seven daily trips a day, and fifteen of the units on the Sunrise side would empty only onto Sunrise and not onto Sunny Dunes. A reasonable person can draw his or her own conclusion about the traffic impact of the neighborhood from the professional development versus the residential. As a resident who is proud of his neighborhood, I ask your help in maintaining its residential village-type character. If there is a way to achieve that goal, as well as the developer's plan for the proposed property, then let's try it. But as yet, not enough time has been devoted to that process to include us to form a consensus. We have not been involved. One last comment. The staff at the Planning Department has been very cooperative and helpful in providing information on this proposal on short notice and in educating us on the process. I'd like to thank them for their professionalism. Thank you very much for allowing me the time to speak.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome.
I'm Sherri Sale. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council members. I am here, I live, I am the house that is the first facing house west of Sunrise Way on Sunny Dunes, so I would be the one that would be most exposed to the parking area that's proposed for this project. There's multiple issues here which Peter and Steve have just talked to you about. There's road traffic, additional lights at night from the project, traffic and sound. I'm concerned at the amount of privacy that I am going to lose with the proposed project and the parking lot directly across from my home. I am also concerned at the headlights that will shine directly into my home when turning east out of the parking lot proposed on Sunny Dunes Road. I also, I already have an incredible amount of traffic that uses my circular driveway to turn around, and when they turn onto Sunny Dunes by mistake, they use my driveway to turn back around and go back onto Sunrise Way. So with this, what's going to happen, I will have excess traffic due to miscalculations of the entrance into the new project. I'm not adverse to the building. I do prefer to have homes residential, but if you do approve this, I wish that you would put a condition in there for a wall and gates to my home, which I spoke to Chris Mills about in a meeting that we had together. He didn't seem to think that there would be a problem with this that would guard me against additional traffic noise and my privacy of my home. Thank you for your time.
And thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on item number ten? If so, please come forward at this time. I'm going to ask if you just line up and... Good evening again.
Good evening, Your Honor.
And welcome.
Mr. McCullough, you're back. John Bush, appearances are again why I'm down here. The appearance of the presentation from staff was that the unsuitable land on Sunny, excuse me, on Sunrise for residential could be turned into professional. It's deeper than that which is now proposed for residential on Sunrise, on Sunrise, excuse me, Sunny Dunes. Why? Why can't that remain residential on Sunny Dunes and Sunrise? There's no reason for that property. The other is that it was odd to me, I drive that area quite often going up to the other end, and I always saw that the city didn't maintain the curb and the curb wall and the gutter along there. It was always overgrown and full of dirt, and shortly after it was, the property was transferred, I noticed that all of a sudden there's a new curb wall and a new gutter. The appearance is that the city has done that. I don't like what I hear. I don't like what I see. This looks insipid to me. I'm sorry I don't have evidence. I don't have any other than what my eyes can observe, but I see a situation that is growing. It didn't start out this way. It started out as a church. Now it's a school. Now it's a business, and it's ruining my neighborhood. I don't want this to transpire.
Good evening, Mike Connors. I live just down Sunrise from the proposed site. One of my comments is similar. I'm not sure that we don't need Bill O'Reilly, because I really did not know this was going on tonight. I came for the other issue and stayed, but just look, and even though I only live two blocks from this, did not receive any notice that this hearing was happening or that this was proposed, which I think is kind of odd. But just eyeballing the map, it does look to me like the lots on Sunrise are about as wide as the ones on Sunny Dune, even though the gentleman from the zoning said the ones on Sunrise would be unsuitable for housing because they're too shallow. Well, I don't understand why that's not true on Sunny Dunes then. It seems to me that we need Bill O'Reilly here to stop some of the spinning that's going on. The other thing that occurs to me is he sat there and said that the residential would be less, less proper for Sunrise because the residential would have traffic twenty-four hours a day. Well, I think the five or six houses you could put in that space would not even come close to the traffic that's going to be coming in and out of a six-thousand-five-hundred-square-foot professional office building. Again, I think he's spinning us, and I don't understand why somebody who is supposed to be looking out for the city and making sure that this is done fairly seems to be spinning it in favor of this thing. I don't think any reasonable person's going to think that seven or five or six houses are going to give anywhere near the traffic that the others do. My other concern with this is that that area has already become very high-density in the last few years with the new Ralph's supermarket, which is built beyond what I can believe as far as density to parking, built right up to the sidewalks. Again, right down the street, we would have another building built right up to the sidewalks with high density, that at some point I think we need to, you know, take it back and say, no, we need to look at the density in this area. This is a residential area, not a high-density business area, which is what we're turning it into. Appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome.
I wasn't going to speak on this issue either, but I just couldn't hold my tongue anymore. First of all, to me, it's, I don't know how you guys do it, listen to people, put down your staff all the time. I employ a lot of people, and if I couldn't stand up for my people and didn't trust them to do the job that they're doing, I don't know what I would do, but obviously you guys have to bite your tongue. But it seems obvious to me that the staff has done their homework, and anybody, this fifty-two percent commercial is such a red herring to think that it's viable to put residential lots on Sunrise. I know there's some there that were put here years ago. Again, I tell you, I was born in this town, and as long as I can remember, anybody that lived on Sunrise back even in the sixties, it was tough to get out on Sunrise. So to put residential on Sunrise is stupid. And the fact that the lots are little substandard, seven-foot, I understand, a little bit smaller, to me is a viable way of handling that piece of property. I drive by there all the time, and to have some nice homes in there would be great down Sunny Dunes and some nice professional buildings similar to the Chiafi Office Building just down the street or the radio station just down the street would be a perfect use for that property. And I think the staff should be commended. They did a good job. I think by eliminating the one lot, I think they've come to a proper proposal there. That's all I had to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Did you already speak on item ten? And you can't speak again. Yes, if you please come forward, yes. Good evening.
Hello again. I live in the extended neighborhood. I'm not immediately impacted by this. However, in my concern, once again, as a resident of the town, I would hope that any variance on the general plan would be extremely carefully looked at, that adherence to it inasmuch as is possible would be ideal. If a combination residential and office use ends up being made on this U-shaped, this L-shaped piece, I would think to keep it within the concept of the general plan that residential units should go all the way down the street to Sunrise and that any office complex could face onto Sunrise but exit onto Sunrise so that you then have some practical use for the busy Sunrise area, but you've maintained a great, to a great degree, the integrity of the residential street. Thank you.
Thank you. Evening. Please come forward. And welcome. You all have five minutes.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Randall Guy. I own Ramon Mobile Home Park on the corner of Sunrise and Ramon. It's a two-hundred-and-sixty-space mobile home park, and I too am immediately impacted by this development. However, unlike most of my neighbors, I am in favor of it. I think that this is a wise use of the property that's been vacant for far too long, and I do have a couple of questions, or a question in particular for Mr. Evans, if I could. The six-foot buffer wall that I was, I spoke with Alex Meyerhoff about at one point in time, is that to be on Sunny Dunes and Sunrise, sir? Mr.?
He will get back to you on that issue.
Okay, okay. Because I believe that for the sake of the residents of the park, it's a very necessary component of the development, and I believe without it, it would be a very difficult situation. But on the whole, I think that this is a well-thought-out plan. Thank you.
Good evening again.
Good evening again.
And welcome.
I commend you and thank you for doing these late evenings with this. I'll be brief. I'm a little amazed that there's, Mike Lindley, thank you, I'm sorry, that when we are a villain in doing this particular project, when we look at it, we felt that this was an enhancement of that corner. The plan went through, planning went through, staff went through, all the proper procedures, and any implication, as you hear these, that anything else happens is just, it's very surprising. But you're right in your comments earlier about the perception, which is why I'm glad we have these opportunities and we have these procedures to overcome those. But we would ask that you would approve this plan tonight. The concession was made when it was felt that the lots at planning were, at commission level, were too small, and the concession was made, and they were brought within a few feet of regulation. So it wasn't as dismissed or ignored. There is a concession in the second plan over the first one, and we are a buffer between a mobile home park and these other homes that they're describing. That's what is on the other side of what it is, as we discussed, five-hundred-thousand-dollar homes. We have a different community right behind these homes, and that is a good blend. So we tried to do a good and responsible job here with this project, and I would appreciate your acceptance.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in this public hearing? If so, please come forward at this time. Then we will close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I had a question regarding the comments that were made by staff about the offices on Takwitz. My business has leased office space there for about twenty years, and I've seen the big difference between standard office about the traffic and the medical offices, and there was a comment made about medical offices would be allowed in there based on the parking allotment or something. Can you clarify that? Is that designed into here, or would that require a change to the design that we're looking at?
Well, I think I heard two questions, and I'll talk about the first one relative to offices on Takwitz, basically between Sunrise Way roughly... Basically, between Sunrise Way roughly, all the way down to the Palm Springs Mall, the property is zoned R2 residential, 15 units per acre. That designation allows for offices by conditional use permit, and you've seen the offices that have been built along that corridor. They do have driveways onto residential streets. You know, somebody mentioned the, the office of a local architect. There's an insurance company. So, we've, we've had similar situations like this, and over the years, it's been a pretty successful land use relationship. We had concerns about those projects at public hearings, but operationally, if you take a look at the, both sides of the property, the residential and the office seems to be doing quite well. We also have a situation on Ramone Road where we have some of those single-family homes on Ramone Road. We have an accountant that went through this same process to convert a single-family home to an office. It's, it's been a good neighbor to its residential neighbors in that particular neighborhood. So, when you, you take a look at zoning on, on major thoroughfares, what we've tried to allow people to look at is where residential is appropriate. People can propose residential where an office building might be appropriate. They can propose an office building. And I can tell you that we struggle with property development standards on lots that are, I think these are 113 or 17 feet deep. If you tried to subdivide the lots on Sunrise Way with driveways facing onto Sunrise Way, they would have a hard time meeting all of our setback criteria so that they could have adequate turnaround on Sunrise Way frontage. This particular property has, on Sunrise Way, is a residential, medium-density, 15-unit-per-acre property. It's not single-family residential, so the, the property that fronts on Sunrise is a little bit over an acre, and in theory, somebody could propose condominium or apartment complex up to 15 units. So, it's, it's not likely it would be five single-family homes with that type of zoning, although it could be if somebody proposed it. Relative to the parking issue, your second question, the condition of approval basically says that they have to comply with the parking ordinance. There is a different parking ratio for medical office than for general office. You need more parking spaces for medical. If the council were concerned about the type of office and you wanted to make it the least turnover, in theory, you could say, let it, you know, no medical office. Medical office has a little bit higher turnover when you take a look at traffic and parking needs. But as it's proposed now, there are no variances for parking. We looked at that. We, they asked for some modifications to parking, and staff recommended disapproval of that, and the Planning Commission recommendation to you is that they comply with the parking ordinance regardless of the type of office building. So, if they do general office, you'll get a little bit larger building. If they do medical office, you'll end up with smaller buildings because of the parking demand. I think that answers both of your questions and gave you a little bit of background on the land use relative to the Sunrise Way frontage.
Counsel, other questions? Comments? Ms. Foul.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, and I need to, to go.
To the.
Well, let me, let me ask it from here. Behind the residential lots, what is that? It says a driveway. I, I'm not quite clear what that is.
You're going to have to go up and point it out.
The, the driveway that's shown in here is part of the Ramone Mobile Home Park, which is this area here. So, this is part of the neighboring property that has no ownership or tie other than they share an area here in common property line. There was a question as to would there be a property line wall on the north property line along here and the west property line? Yes, there would be a six-foot-high masonry wall, and that would have to go in on both sides, and I think that answers the question of the owner of Ramone Mobile Home Park.
And then my, my other question is, is the, has the suggestion been made, as, as one of the speakers asked, about making this also a residential lot and just having this commercial on Sunrise?
The, the Planning Commission talked about driveways on Sunrise and, and orientation, and Dave Bracken, the city engineer, certainly might want to talk about the traffic if you have specific questions. Could you design a project that you would take that into a single-family home, make the frontage along Sunrise all professional? You could do that, and here's the challenge. One of the conditions of approval of this project, as well as Desert Chapel across the way, is that they install a median island in Ramone, or Sunrise Way. So, in essence, you would not have the ability to have left turns in and out of this particular location. So, if you had, let's just say you, you said no drive here, you punched a driveway through there and a driveway through there, you would only be able to enter going southbound, and you would only be able to exit going southbound. And taking a look at the traffic flow, the feeling of, you know, having a driveway come through with exiting here where people could use the signal and make their left turns, it's a safer and easier condition for people to traffic, recognizing that it does generate some more activity in this particular location. If you took a look at the whole site, you know, relative to the allowable density, just so you get a feel, you could propose up to 24 units on the entire site. Obviously, this would be single-family, and then this would be the multifamily, where you could, in theory, try to propose 15 or 16. Because of the lot size, you'd never get there. You just could not get that kind of density. But you could have a small garden apartment-type complex as an alternative land use on that corner.
Ms. Poyet.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to, really don't have any questions, but I'll make a statement, then maybe a recommendation. But during my short tenure here on the City Council, we have approved two, two very large development projects. The Huddle Springs Development Project and then John Westman's Project at Coia and Bristow. They were very, very easy decisions because it had unanimous neighborhood support. It appears to me that some more neighborhood involvement here is recommended and, or needed, and I'm going to recommend that we postpone this for 60 days and ask for the neighbors and staff to, to come together and come up with a plan, like the other developments, and bring this to fruition. Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I, I have a question for Mr. Lindley. I was just wondering if there's anything pressing in this whole process. Do you know?
I've talked to Desert Chapel representatives before the meeting, and we talked about the possibility of a continuance. I don't think they're adverse to it. So, I, I think a 60-day continuance for a neighborhood meeting would be appropriate, and we'll convene a neighborhood meeting and take the project to that group.
Could I, if I could. Doug, then, you are indicating that 60 days will not create an issue under the Permit Streamlining Act?
I don't believe so, but I'd have to go back in and double-check the exact calendar dates if you want a technical answer to that.
The, the problem is that if we do not approve within the period of time provided by the Permit Streamlining Act, then the project's deemed approved. As long as the continuance is shorter than whatever that period is, we don't have a problem, but if you were to continue it beyond that period, there is an issue. So, I don't know whether we want to continue this to later in the meeting so we can check on that, or continue it for a shorter period of time.
Why don't we just take a break at this point and give them an opportunity to check, and we'll come back? Okay? All right.
We'll call this meeting back to order. Yes.
Well, we've conferred with the applicant and I believe the applicant is requesting an agreeable to the 60-day extension. So with their concurrence, I think you can go ahead with that extension as you proposed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I had a question about what's the proper notice and was proper notice given in this case? Because there seems to be some complaints from the neighbors that they were not noticed properly.
What we'd like to do is, well, if we can get the addresses, I missed one of the addresses, so if I can get the addresses from the clerk, I'll double-check. What we do is we ask the applicant to go to a title company and get a title search of all property owners within 400 feet of the subject property. We do a quick cursory check to make sure that they go out 400 feet and that we have the right number. And it looks like an accurate mailing. We don't check everyone perfectly. Sometimes people get tax bills at different locations than they live, and when we take a look at it, we find out that it might be at a different location, or it could go to a business name or something of that nature. So it really depends. But what we do when we find out we have a notice concern, we do double-check and make sure that we at least tried. And then the staff that does the mailing, they sign an affidavit of mailing that they completed the mailing, they put the envelopes together, and we send it out in regular mail. It's not uncommon when you send out several hundred notices. In some weeks, we do five, six, 800 notices that people call in and say, "We didn't get one." But if anybody's here that didn't get one, I'll be here after the meeting. I'd like their name and address, and we'll double-check.
Thank you. Ms. McCullough, any other questions?
No, I think it's clear that the city made an attempt to get proper notice, but for some reason, some people didn't get it. Okay, that's good enough for me. Thanks.
Well, in every hearing, eight years I've been on council, I've had people to come up at some point and say that they didn't receive them. And now, would you give the distance once again? Because a person living a couple of blocks away isn't very likely to receive one.
It really depends on the configuration, but a couple of blocks away, 400 feet, you know, the state law says the minimum that we have to notice is 300 feet. The city's always noticed 400 feet out, so we go 100 feet beyond the state requirement. We've had debates in the past about going out 6, 7, 800. It increases the mailing exponentially, and with condominiums, you know, it's not uncommon for us to send out hundreds of notices. In this particular one, it certainly wasn't that number, but it was a fair number.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion on the floor. If I remember correctly, Mr. Puniet, seconded by Ms. Vogt. Are there any other questions? And that's for a continuance for 60 days. If there are no further questions, roll call.
Wasn't, didn't that motion also, we asked, did we have to include in the motion what we want to happen in the 60 days or not?
We heard loud and clear, we're going to have a neighborhood meeting, and this will be plenty of time to have one.
Twice. Okay, roll call.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
No.
Mr. Mills absent. Mr. Puniet?
Aye.
And Mr. Mayor?
Aye. Welcome back, Mr. Mills. Yes, it is.
It's time for 11 o'clock.
We'd like to thank all of you for your cooperation on those two matters, and we appreciate it very much. We'll move on to item number 11, which...
Mr. Mayor, if I could, at this time, we would need to enact the GLC rule. Council would have to take action to continue. I do believe that we could handle the rest of this agenda in a relatively short order.
Mr. Mayor? I'll make a motion to continue.
We have a motion. Second? Oh, yeah, easy for you to say. You've been asleep for the past two hours. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous, and we will move on to, we will continue the meeting, and we'll move on to item number 11, Fairfield Resorts Financial Impact Mitigation Fee. Staff report, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is a request to approve a DDA agreement. This is for the Time Share, Star Canyon Time Share Project. This is a financial impact mitigation fee only, the $28.50. We're requesting that you approve that fee only this evening. The architectural plans are being revised. They have not been approved. They will be coming back before you and going through, matriculating through the planning process and back to council. So all we're asking for tonight is approval of the impact fee, which provides revenue to the city. And with that, if you have specific questions, Mr. Evans can address those. Thank you.
Okay, yes, are there any questions before we open the hearing? Thank you. Then we will open the public hearing at this time. Anyone who would like to speak on this issue, you will have five minutes. I don't like the sound of that. We'll close the public hearing. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I move the motion.
I'll second it.
It is moved by Ms. Vogt, seconded by Mr. Puniet. Comments? Mr. Mills?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, I have a very serious concern on this item, and this is, having been, having been on the Planning Commission at the time this project went through, it was a very controversial project. It is a five-story project and some, and up to 60 feet high. And it had a quality level that when it was approved by the, by the, by the Planning Commission, was a very high-level quality with a lot of detailed requirements as to make sure that quality was maintained during the construction. And also, that there were several iterations that the project went through with the developer at the time, Mr. Gold, that created a feel, not only in the site with the landscaping and a lot of boulder work and a lot of other amenities to the site, including the architecture and the way the building stepped in and out, and, and the depth of the building and the feel of the building, that were all a part of the DDA. Those plans were accepted by the current owner of the project as part of the DDA. And we took a lot of neighborhood heat on this particular item to make sure that the quality level of this, of this was very, very high. And seeing the presentation so far of what we've seen for what the developer wants to change, it is not even close to what we're looking, what, what, what was approved from a quality level standpoint. And, and I certainly do not want anything to do with anything other on this, anything other than was originally approved in the, in the DDA on this, on, on this project. And I think any attempt to alter those conditions of approval is going to be met with a lot of opposition, at least from me on the council, I hope others, but from the neighborhood, I will guarantee it. And this is a building that is, that was a controversial building from a location standpoint, from a size standpoint. It is at the mouth of Takwitz Canyon as far as the view goes, one of our best view corridors. It was very important that whatever project goes in here establishes a precedent, not just in the, in the Takwitz Canyon view corridor, but also throughout the city for projects of this size. And the Planning Commission at the time felt that they did establish a standard that was, that would be acceptable, not just here, but, but throughout the city. And what has been proposed change-wise now, as I mentioned, is not even a respectable second in my architectural opinion. And evidently, that's also the opinion of the Architectural Review Board, based on the conditions that were given to the project at their meeting on November 24th, and also, from what I understand, reflected in the comments by, by the Planning Commission at the time they reviewed this. So I certainly don't have a problem with the, with the, with, with the exacts that we're talking about here and voting on the, on this, on this impact fee, this mitigation impact fee. But I will not be supporting it just to, to make a point here, that I do not want to see any changes architecturally from the DDA. As far as I'm concerned, any changes on the DDA architecturally are, are, are not going to be acceptable. And I don't want to go through the battle that we went through on this thing the, the first time to get it to be a very, very good project. And so I think I said my piece there, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I want to echo those, those thoughts because as a council member, I know that we were very excited about this project. As a matter of fact, I came at a time when we really needed to hear some good news in Palm Springs in terms of our construction, and especially for a hotel, and they brought us the plan. We made many suggestions along the way. They followed them. It's a high-end project, the materials that they planned to use, the color palettes, et cetera. And what I saw recently, none of that is reflective of what, what we saw originally. We want to make sure that that happens. The design, the flow of that lobby, and the way the pools were layered, you know, all that's gone. So if they want this project here, I think if they want to look at that original plan that we approved, minor modifications, fine, but not what I saw.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I absolutely agree with both you and Mr. Mills, but that's not what we're voting on.
Yes, but we need to say that.
Okay. I wanted to make sure I didn't have any confusion here, because I moved this because of the financial impact mitigation fee. That's the only reason I moved this.
I...
And had nothing to do with the project itself, because I think the project itself, the way it stands, is not acceptable to any of us. But the project mitigation fee is, is what I moved.
And we are aware of that, yes, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, I just wanted to add, because I think these comments are all useful, and we certainly will relay them. But the document you have before you tonight actually says in section 3.1, under the section which deals with rights to develop, which it says that the project has to be developed in accordance with the development plan, the existing land use approvals. If there's any conflict between the terms of this agreement and the terms of the DDA, including the scope of development attached to the DDA regarding the development, the terms of the DDA shall control. So the document by its own terms makes it, it actually is incorporating by reference the scope of development of the, of the DDA, which is what the council previously approved. So nothing in this document would vary the land use plan, the architectural process that was previously approved. We know there are drawings that are kind of in process now that, of course, the Design Review Board is not happy with and are getting revised. But the approval of this will not undercut in any way the city's ability to insist on the original project as approved.
Thank you. And we do have a motion and a second. Roll call. If we will, with that motion, if you will please include waiving the text and reading the title.
Wave text, read title.
Ms. Puniet? You concur?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, this would be a ordinance of the City of Palm Springs, California, approving a development agreement with Fairfield Resorts Incorporated to facilitate the collection by the City of Palm Springs of a financial impact mitigation fee for the Star Canyon Resort on the west side of South Palm Canyon Drive between Sunny Dunes Road and Mesquite Avenue, Zone PD 260, Sections 22 and 23. Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
No.
Mr. Puniet?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. And that's for our first. And we'll move to item number 12. Public hearing, Canyon Heights Right-of-Way E. Smith. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This will allow us and facilitate the final phase of Canyon Heights condominiums on South Palm Canyon. What we're requesting is vacation. This is for ingress and egress of certain areas, which will facilitate us to do the emergency vehicles, emergency access. Also, it will be utilities and those kinds of things. If you need specific details, Mr. Parakian is here, our city engineer, who can answer in more detail. Thank you.
Are there any questions on the staff report? Then we will open the public hearing at this time. If there's anyone who would like to speak to this issue, please come forward. And we will close the public hearing at this time, counsel.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
I'll move the resolution.
It's moved by Mr. Mills.
Second.
Second by Mr. McCullough. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Puniet?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. It passes unanimously. And we will move to council comments, announcement, inter-agency reports.
Mr. Mayor, I've had some feedback that the people out there, especially at law meetings, are not really interested about what I did last week, so I'm, unless it's really important, I'm not going to talk about that anymore.
Okay. All right, on the, on the 8th, most of us attended the Palm Springs International Film Festival, Film Festival opening evening. On the 10th, we attended the festival VIP celebrity party at Spencer's, several of us. I made an appearance at a Filipino organization meeting here in Palm Springs. Palm Springs International Film Festival Awards Gala and Reception, held at the home of the Houston's, which most of us also attended. I did a welcome to elder, to an elder hostel group, which was the largest one in North America, which attended the film festival. Stopped by the Frey Building with some of the council members, who, Milgar was there painting the center with, along with our homeless feeding program. We held our Araby meeting here at City Council Chambers, which everyone attended. I attended the Canadian Gala Reception sponsored by the Canadian Council during the Palm Springs International Film Festival. Did a radio program representing the City of Palm Springs on the Mike Boglios, Boglowski Show, the Bogey Show. I attended a program lunch with Maurice, who has a... I attended a program lunch with Maurice, who has a program called Dishing with Maurice. He does an evaluation of foods and restaurants throughout the Coachella Valley, but most of all, in Palm Springs. Tended a reception, The Path of the Bighorn, for artists and sponsors. I presented a proclamation for the City of Palm Springs at the Martin Luther King Commemorative Celebration at Our Lady of Solitude. Tended a fundraiser for the Servicemen's Legal Defense Network. I also presented some certificates to the Palm Springs High School Football Awards Dinner. I made a presentation to the coach and a proclamation to them. And the closing night screening and gala reception for the Palm Springs International Film Festival. And we, oh, and Mr. Mills and I attended the ribbon cutting for US Filter and the South Coast Air Quality Management District. And we have some twin turbines there, which will assist us in decreased use of electricity, saves us quite a bit of money, and also makes our air quite a bit cleaner. So Chris, you have any comments on that? It was a great program, shows once again the partnerships are working for us. And we will move on to our legislative item. Yes.
One of the things I attended, most of the things that the mayor attended, but last night I had the opportunity to, through my business, to again be present at the West Hollywood City Council meeting. And one of the things that I was talking with the mayor of West Hollywood about was their legislative agenda. They have quite an extensive legislative agenda. They have the privilege of having a lobbyist, both in Sacramento and in Washington, DC. And I had spoken with the mayor about wanting to start a legislative subcommittee where we could be kept abreast of things that were happening, both in Sacramento and in Washington, DC, that affect our cities. And the West Hollywood City Council has offered to share with us all of their legislative updates from their lobbyists. So I'll be starting that committee soon. So I just want to, we offer a thanks to the City of West Hollywood for doing that.
And, you know, I used to attend the League of California Cities meeting on a regular basis and used to provide a lot of that information. And I think as long as we are connected with the League, we will be provided with a lot of information. And it's a good opportunity. So I would recommend that as many of our council members who would like to attend, that it's definitely a good thing. And we'll move on to our legislative items, number 13, Mountain Gate Assessment District 161.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is in regard to the-
Mr. Reddy, could I just interrupt you a second?
Uh-uh.
Yeah, I have to abstain on this item for business-related purposes. And thanks for putting them all on one agenda for me.
Thank you, Mr. Mills.
You're buying dinner the next time.
Staff report, please.
Yes, this is a 308 single-family development on North Palm Canyon and Gateway Drive. This is the assessment district we're creating for Mountain Gate. Our bond consultant is here, Ms. Suzanne Harrell. She's in the audience if you have any specific questions for her. And I would ask our finance director, Tom, is there any comments that you would like to make at this time?
Yes, the action before the city council is to approve a bond issue, not to exceed $5 million. The city's general funder is not at risk at all. The assessments will be assessed against each property. There's 308 homes in the development, and would be paid by the property owners on their property tax bills. The annual assessment will be somewhere between $975 for the smaller homes, up to about $1,500 for the larger ones. And if there's any other questions, either myself or Ms. Suzanne Harrell or Herb Schreiner, our bond counselor, are here to answer those questions. Thank you.
Well, I had the opportunity to work with them on this assessment that came before us on several occasions. And initially, I was very concerned about assessment districts, but they presented it in such a way that I think it will not be a hardship on the property owners. And we also made sure that there'd be an upfront educational system for the home buyers. And so I think it's a good thing. Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
How would we monitor that the home buyers are aware? I mean, maybe I could get a little help just through the process since it's been an issue here with some of the other things that's happened in the past.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there's a notification process when you buy a home there, and several documents that you have to sign, that the home buyer is aware that there's an assessment district on there. As a matter of fact, and they give the city hall phone number, my phone number, if people need further explanation. We've gotten several calls from people asking how they would work. So people are being informed that if they buy these, they'll have an additional assessment on the home.
Thank you, Tom.
The one thing I might add is, because I know on some of the Sunrise Norte and the other CCNR issues we're dealing with, there's been quite a concern by the homeowners that the informational documents are too voluminous and it actually becomes confusing. So I think we should work with the developer to make sure that this notification is a separate document that is simple and easy to understand.
I thought that was one of the things, yes.
It is one of the requirements in the policy.
Yes, okay.
Mr. Mayor, is this assessment in perpetuity? I mean, does it ever end, or it's?
Yes. The assessment, and it pays for the public improvements in the project. I believe the bond issue will be for 25 years, and then it's paid off. There's also a landscaping, a lining district is separate from this. That pays for the maintenance of the landscaping around the project. That would go on, obviously, forever.
Counsel, what is your pleasure?
And, Mr. Mayor, if I can interrupt you. It says in the recommendation resolution, there's actually two resolutions attached.
You were just saying that there were two resolutions?
There's two resolutions. One approves the bond documents, and the other approves the acquisition agreement with the developer.
Mr. Mayor? Ms. McCullough?
I'll move the resolutions.
We have a motion.
I'll second that.
A second motion by Mr. McCullough, and second by Mr. Pugnay. Any further questions or discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Vogt?
Aye.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. It passes for one abstention. Item number 14, an ordinance for second reading and adoption, introduced on 1704 Municipal Code Amendment, Auction Sales. Staff report, please.
Madam Clerk, would you like to proceed here?
Yes, this is an ordinance for second reading. It was introduced at your last meeting.
Thank you. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills.
Move the ordinance, waive text.
And retitle. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McCullough. Roll call.
Yes, sir. This would be an ordinance of the City of Palm Springs, California, amending Chapter 5.04 to the Palm Springs Municipal Code to allow auction sales at city-owned facilities subject to land use permit by the Director of Planning and Zoning. Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Pugnay?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. It passes unanimously. Item 15 has been pulled. Are there any added starters?
There are none, sir.
Reports and requests? Council reports or requests?
I have a question. Why was item 18 pulled?
Item 18 was pulled to allow me to contact the commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll report back on that.
I would like for a report on a revised fee program from the Parks and Rec Commission for the skate park. Yes, Mr. Mills.
Could we also include in that for how we handle similar situations throughout the city?
Oh, I think, yes, I think that would be part of it, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have, want to report to my fellow council members. As a result of that late meeting on the evening that went into the morning, December 17th, I had talked about forming a liaison role with the Mizel Senior Center, and just wanted to update you that I have had a meeting with the interim director, Dean Lockwood, who has subsequently talked with his board. And we're just continuing discussions right now to see how a liaison role may work with the Mizel Senior Center. To request to staff, I'd like an update on the work of the Homeless Task Force. And I'd also like to know, there's an update from the General Plan Steering Committee on the vision statement.
Are there any other requests?
Mr. Mayor, I had requested, I think Mr. Buslov is working on it now, for a standardized report for the commissions. And so will we have that soon?
You should have it within the next week.
Thank you.
Public reports or requests? Staff reports or requests?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Vogt had requested, I believe it was two weeks ago or last week, on the all-day study session to get caught up on the range of issues that are still out there. And I wondered if council would be able to give us guidance on a date that we could agendize and schedule.
Did we say a Friday?
I don't think we said a day. I mean, a day.
You're looking for a date right now, eh?
I don't have my PowerPoint. Because of my business, it's going to be difficult to do an entire day, especially this time of year. We talked about possibly on a weekend, but my understanding is that that creates a lot of problems because staff is not here on weekends. So then we'd have all kinds of other issues. So I'm not sure a weekend day works.
A weekday, preferably Friday, would be a little easier for me because the things that we've scheduled for a weekend are events for the community, and it'd be a little difficult unless we did it quite a ways out to cancel when they expect someone from the council.
Well, I'm just going to start with Friday the 13th.
I'm out of town.
February. You're out of town?
I am.
20th?
I'll have to look at my PowerPoint.
Mr. Mayor? If a full day is a difficulty, perhaps a half day might work better. It certainly would for me.
Oh, one of the other things that we also said, because this is for the study sessions, correct? Yeah, we'd have, it'd be best to do it when we had access to staff anyway, so it'd have to be a weekday.
Mr. Mayor, we will have docket review next week on our study session if council finds it hard to come to a consensus date today.
Yeah, I'll have my-
And perhaps a email in the morning, just reminding us to look at our schedules would bring dates to the table with us.
Our next regular meeting will be February 4th, 2004, at 7:00 PM. Our next study session will be January 28th. I'm just doing this before. January 28th at 2004, 7:00 PM. Both will be preceded by a closed session at 4:00 PM.
Now, sorry, Ron. I was under the impression on the 28th, we're having an adjourned meeting to deal with the convention center.
Yes, you're going to have on January 28th, you took this item, item two, and we're going to have that at an adjourned meeting on next Wednesday. Then following that, you-
So we're adjourning this meeting to that meeting?
That is correct.
Okay.
So the 28th is our adjourned meeting? Yes. Okay. Yes. Do we have enough glasses here tonight? Okay, then we will call this meeting adjourned.